So first, you do the preamble, then we'll get everyone engaged.
Good morning, everyone. In compliance with notification requirements of Ohio's Open Meeting Law in Section 101.021 of the Codified Ordinances of Cleveland, Ohio, 1976, notice of this meeting has been publicly posted. All boards and commissions under the purview of the City Planning Department conducted its meetings in a manner modeled after Robert's Rules of Order. Actions during the meeting will be taken by voice vote. Recusals from any vote due to a conflict of interest should be stated for the record prior to the taking of any vote. In order to ensure that everyone participating in the meeting has the opportunity to be heard, we ask that online participants use the raise hand feature before asking a question or making a comment. The raise hand feature can be found in the participants panel on the desktop and mobile version and activated by clicking the hand icon. Please wait for the chair or facilitator to recognize you and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When finished speaking, please lower your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon again and mute your microphone. We will also be utilizing the chat feature to communicate with participants. The chat feature can be activated by clicking the chat button located on the bottom of the WebEx screen. All meeting activity is being recorded via the WebEx platform. These proceedings are also being live streamed via YouTube. All requests to speak on a particular matter submitted through proper channels have been considered. We have also received emails from those who have provided written comment on a particular matter. Proper channels for comments are listed below. Communication with members of this body must follow proper channels for consideration. Any comments received by the Wednesday noon deadline are collected by city planning staff and disseminated to the commission members prior to any scheduled meeting. Proper channels for public comment include sending an email to the cityplanning@clevelandohio.gov address with a comment or a letter, calling or leaving a message at (216) 664-2210, sending a letter or dropping off comments at City Hall 601 Lakeside Avenue Suite 501 Cleveland, Ohio 44114. Our meeting rules and procedures are that the chair will call each agenda item and then each applicant will be invited to proceed through their presentation. Each presentation should be completed prior to questions and comments from the commission in order to facilitate a smooth presentation. Once the presentation has concluded, the chair will ask planning staff to summarize design review advisory committee recommendations if applicable and any public comments received. Public comments received through the proper channels by the deadline are distributed to commission members prior to the meeting. Staff will also identify any members of the public present and scheduled to speak. Public comment is allowed at the discretion of the chair and any individual providing public comment is permitted two minutes to speak to the agenda item in which they have an interest. The chair will then request a recommendation from staff if applicable. The commission will then begin deliberations and project review. Any commission member except the chair may make a motion at any point after an agenda item has been called.
Oh, thank you. Um, one call, please.
Anthony?
Present.
Lucre?
Present.
Hurry?
It's not present.
McCray Scott?
Sergeant?
Present.
And Slife?
Present.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda, approval of the meeting minutes from last meeting. If you guys had the opportunity to review it, now here they are.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting, please.
Second.
Thank you. One call, please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Lucre?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
And Slife?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. We're gonna take one item out of order. We have Councilman Harsh here. Under mandatory referrals, I believe it's the first ordinance number 569 2025. It's all yours, Councilman Harsh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the assistance this morning. We have a presentation. I don't know if it needs to be pulled up before I get started, or is that okay? Great. So Chris Harsh from the City Council, Ward 13. I'm joined. Charles, introduce yourself.
Yeah, Charles Koenig, Neighborhood Development Director for Old Brooklyn CDC 4274 Pearl Road.
And some of our partner members will be joining us online. If any of them are here now, they can unmute themselves, or do they not need to chat? Okay, they can unmute themselves if anybody here from Desmond are tipping, but they should be jumping on shortly. This is a request. We need to do the title transfer, a chain of title transfer to approve a tip. To make a long story short, HUD loved our math. Four months ago, things have changed, and DC HUD wants us to increase the number of units and decrease rent, which changes our economic capital stack. So we're still good. The project could still move forward, but now we have to apply for the TIF. It was originally planned to do it without, so we're gonna run through the whole project very quickly, give you an overview, and then open up any questions. So the Memphis Pearl, and please interrupt me. I tend to just sort of ramble. If you need to stop me, just tell me to stop. The Memphis Pearl project is two buildings. That side is the school. The previous side was the church. They were built next to each other, but one was built 120 years ago. That's the church, and then 20 years after that, 100 years ago, the school was built adjacent to the church. So the next slide, after table of contents, is the background, and the next slide is, here we go. The Old Brooklyn Community Development Corporation has purchased this property since 2014. I'll let Charles walk you through their stewardship.
Yeah, so we've actually owned the property since 2019. The former St. Luke's congregation stopped convening in that building in 2014, so about a decade ago. This current design iteration came through after a few failed attempts to redevelop the site and was helped in RFP by our organization for redevelopment of the site. At the end of 2022, our board of directors selected the current proposal with Desmond Group, and that's kind of what we've been running with since, trying to refine the design, have community engagement, and build out the financial stack, which is, of course, the most challenging part.
And the next slide is our current capital stack. Okay, so far we have $27,489,638 dedicated to this, which starts in March '23 and ends in August of 2024, at least the most recent update to that. Essentially, we have CDC as part of our tipping point for the cap structure. Tipping point does math. They do the development side of preconstruction. The county awarded us $250,000 in ARPA funds in July '23. In August, we got $3 million from community development from ARPA funds allocated. In September, we got another $2.5 million from, that was the economic development, also awarded to this project. In October, we secured a $19 million term sheet with the financial backing of the AFL-CIO Pension Fund, which is very good for us, and which will be HUD insured, which brings HUD into the mix, because it's HUD insured law. In August, we received over $2 million in landfill remediation. So so far, we've gotten almost $8 million allocated to help bridge this gap. And as we all know, I don't need to talk to any of you about middle market neighborhoods and gap finance, gap funding. So we will go to the next slide, which is local vision, and we can just blow past that to the actual local vision slide. Here we go. So as maybe you know, Old Brooklyn is the largest neighborhood in Cleveland. It's 34,000 residents, and the center of Old Brooklyn is Pearl Road, which goes down between Broadview down to State where it forks. But in the middle of that corridor is the Memphis and Pearl intersection. And currently, at the intersection of Memphis and Pearl, there is a vacant building, a vacant building, and another vacant building adjacent to a fourth vacant building. And that's our downtown and that's not good. So we have a very exciting project that will invest in that most central corridor in the neighborhood by preserving a 120-year-old church. And there was a previous plan to knock down the church and build a long-term housing tax credit funded project, which the neighborhood did not care for, primarily because they wanted to keep the church. And it was understandable. So we have come back to them with a project to save the church. In order to do that, though, we do need to remove some buildings around the church so that we can capitalize the rest of the footprint and the parcels there and get the money we need to actually invest in the church to make it stand for another 120 years. So the current plan is right here, as I just said, the current plan is put 86 new units on this and hopefully bring new people into the neighborhood. Old Brooklyn is one of the few neighbors that grew between the 2010 and 2020 census. It grew by about 300 people. And so Old Brooklyn does have some amenities existing. Of course, we're just down the road from the zoo, which sits as our northern neighbor in the neighborhood and really sort of separates us from the Brooklyn Center neighborhood valley. But this is a very significant area for our neighborhood, and building these new residential units here will bring new people into those downtown. So we will go to, oh, I'm sorry. I should talk more about our investment model. So this is not being run by private developers. This is being run by the Old Brooklyn Community Development Corporation. This is a nonprofit community development corporation that has bought and hold this property and is working with government partners and some market partners to invest in the neighborhood in a nonprofit development that really puts the community first.
No, also, Councilman, that we're not just re-preserving the St. Luke's Church, which is no longer an active congregation, but we're also helping secure the future for the Pearl Road United Methodist Church, who's a partner on this project. So they're not only contributing their land to the deal, but also their input and vision for their future. So they're one of, if not the oldest congregation in the city of Cleveland. They've gradually moved down Pearl Road into the Old Brooklyn neighborhood. And so critically, it's a unique partnership of all of these different sources really driving towards a community-oriented and led vision of what we want this corner to be for the neighborhood.
Yeah, we can't undersell that enough, because we are working with a church that has been, unfortunately, abandoned for over 12 years. And we are working with the congregation, one of the longest-running active congregations in the city, and definitely in the neighborhood. Over 100 years, they've been actively running. So we are working with two different institutions in trying to preserve the history of the neighborhood in the process.
Yeah, I think it's another critical point to mention the sort of alignment this has with other investments, other major public investments. So Chris talked about the investments that the public has already made in the project itself, but it's also aligning to the vision of the Bus Rapid Transit Corridor that's under design by the Greater Cleveland Regional Transit Authority. And this project basically will be the first significant project south of our traditional hot market neighborhoods in Ohio City and Tremont that really is focusing its design on transit-oriented development. So we've been in great communication with county planning and the RTA to make sure that, and city planning, to make sure that we make sure the building is designed and focuses its residents on using that as an asset and a resource.
I believe we've seen this project before.
Yes, you have.
So, having said that, we have a really tight agenda. Let's get to what you're here to ask for.
We've had over 800 community members engaged. We did that. Let's go to the next slide. We've actually gotten feedback on what the building should look like. We had a really interesting conversation about that. People like wood and stone. They like warm textures. Preferred amenities in the next slide. People really wanted to see outdoor seating, areas to rest. They wanted to have some green space, but actually activating more green space as a result of this project. We can go to inspirational images, pretty pictures. We can go to the next one, which is an expansive site challenges, overcoming the site challenges. Let's pause here real quick. We did find in our soil testing that there is oil, well, from a
gasoline tank.
A tank. Very into the ground, because the Green Line Building used to sell oil. So that thing is down there in the EPA notice, and we've got to deal with that. So we're gonna do some green space, some cleanup there. But we're gonna have to figure that out. So next is our funding strategy. Go past one. Yeah, there we go. So there's our committed capital stack right now. And as you can see, we have a gap of $14 million, which is what we're here to talk about with the TIF. So we believe that with the TIF and the abatement, we will get that $14 million done. We were actually really excited to not have to do this a year ago, and things have changed significantly since then. We had everything planned out. It was looking good. We were ready to roll. It came back to us this year. Still like the project, still approve the project, want to support the project, but change the math on the project, which is what puts us here today to request the TIF option. So the next, so there's our full construction, price, and contingency, the future impact, which I think we can all agree that we've had this conversation before. This is the most impactful project in Old Brooklyn in almost a century. I looked it up. Deaconess was built in 1930, and Deaconess is eight stories high. This will be six stories high. It's right across the street. But this will be the most impactful project in 95 years. And as a middle neighborhood, this is the type of investment that will secure the future of the largest neighborhood in Cleveland for another century. We're terribly excited about this and think that this is gonna be the cover of the magazine when you talk about how to do the appropriate middle neighborhood investment. We think that this will tie everything together, and for questions, Mr. Chair. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
My name is Afama Isapoy, and I'm the project manager from Economic Development. We're here today to request your approval so we can move forward with a chain of title legislation. We are seeking to provide a 30-year non-school TIF to the project valued approximately $16.9 million. CMSD will benefit uh point 9 million. Um, CMSD will benefit uh at approximately 49.7 uh million. If this project goes forward, the project will also create five new jobs uh at the project site. And so um our department is hoping to further contribute. We've already, as councilman stated, contributed about 2.5 million of our ARPA dollars towards the uh pre-development phase. I think the rest of the team have provided all the details that you need.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or comments? On our side? I'll move approval.
A second?
Um, real call, please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luker?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Slight.
Yes. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Get to that meeting. All right, so before we get started, I have to ask that everyone be concise. We have a really full agenda. Council's going to recess and and our and our agenda is really packed today, so.
Oh, you should blame it on me. Blame it on me.
Yeah, you council people. So anyway, um, the first item is a zoning map amendment. Um, there's no ordinance number. Is it changing the use and height in area districts of parcels along East 32nd between on Payne, south of Payne along East 32nd and East 38th? Oh, there you go.
Good morning, uh Chair and Commission. Uh, thank you for having me today. Um, this proposal is for the uh long-vacated Daves along Payne. Uh, and this came to us essentially by way of um the NRP group in Midtown. Uh, and the the issue here really is that this is an OFA project. Uh, and OFA um really wants zoning entitlement across the board now. There there's been a lot of um, I guess, cases that where folks didn't have their variances. And then they, some funding issues occurred. And so um compliance coming out of OFA since January of this year has really wanted zoning entitlement. Uh, and so where we've led to this issue is that, you know, for the last several years since COVID, OFA has generally taken projects that needed um simple variances. And so projects weren't coming before uh this commission or the city with their um drawings until after having some uh knowledge that they were getting that OFA financing. And so what happened in this case is that they don't have zoning entitlement and they would need variances, and then they would need a front yard setback that clues them from being able to get that variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals. And so this project is on an incredibly tight uh timeline. Uh, and so we are here today uh seeking this rezoning. And so as you see here, the purpose is, that's the main purpose. Uh, but really to promote uh walkability to re-develop the Dave's site. Uh, but we also want to uh promote affordable housing and infill development as well as revitalize Payne Avenue and provide neighborhood amenities for new uh and future residences and businesses. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, what you see here is the current zoning. So this is a project expands both sides, the north and south side of Payne. On the north side, you will see where they consolidated the uh upper parcel. They actually have a split zoning issue. So you have a local retail as well as two-family, and when that occurs, it's required for us to adjudicate under the most restrictive, which is two-family. And then on the south side, uh it's semi-industry. Next slide, please. Uh, and so what we're proposing here is across the north and the south is to be limited retail uh to take care of that split zoning issue, but as well as the legacy industrial zoning. Uh, and then applying a map setback um along Payne between uh East 32nd and East 38th on the north and south side. And you ask, why is this important? And it's really because of the front yard setback issue. Any type of residential development um is going to require a front yard setback. Uh, and it's going to be within the context of the block or 15% of the average depth of the lot. Uh, but we're proposing the limited retail that'll allow for the mixed-use residential on the north and south on these parcels. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, the purpose of the map setback, as we just discussed, is a required front yard space in which nothing can be located uh unless specifically allocated by the Cleveland zoning code. Uh, it's indicated on the uh building zone maps of the city uh from either the property line or the street center line. This takes precedence of all other setback regulations, and it must be uh can only be changed with legislation. Uh, next slide, please. Um, this is just giving you context and why we added that um map setback here along Payne is there's already uh existing context to be right right along the uh right of way, uh but it also promotes walkability along Payne. And so there's also, as you can see, aspects of um vacancy, which will allow a variety of different mixed-use uh infill development uh in the future. Next slide, please. This is just giving you an existing context. Where you see in the upper left corner is basically where we were standing when we took this picture. Uh, so we're looking east down Payne, and this is the existing Daves. Um, a common question that came up, and especially from the project team is, you know, Daves already sitting on the at the property line. Why can't we just put the residential here at the property line? Uh, and when you uh remove the context from the block, you fall back into that 15% requirement. So in this case, if we do not add the map setback, they'd have to be setback 30 feet. Um, and I don't believe that's the context that um the neighborhood or the city wants to see here. Uh, and then across the street again is the parking lot. But again, it's project is taking up the whole block. And again, they'd be setback about 31 feet. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is just giving you the existing context showing that uh the Daves is on. Uh, and the reason why they can be on the right of way is because it's not residential. And at the time that Daves was built, it was zoned general retail, and there's no front setbacks for commercial in a general retail district. Next slide, please. Again, just existing context, as you all probably be aware, looking on East 36, looking north, and then looking west across the parking lot site. Next slide, please. And so that's the proposed rezoning here. It's for limited retail, adding the zero-foot map setback along Payne, extending past the project site because we see there's lots of vacancy uh and just want to prepare for any future infill development. And then along the project site specifically is that three feet uh specific map setback. And the purpose of that is because they are within, they are the whole block, but also acknowledging the fact that they're fairly shallow sites. Uh, and so that new place uh part of the project is proposing some parking in the rear for the tenants uh and the residential component. And so understanding that that fits in alignment also with the existing uh properties further south down East 36 and um 33rd and north as well. And so that is the proposed uh rezoning, limited retail uh G2. Uh, this will also come back. The project itself will come back before you, before they build um or do complete design review and city planning. Um, there is a project representative here from NRP Carolyn, and I believe there's somebody from Midtown as well.
Thank you.
Ashley or? Okay. All right, you need to turn the mic on.
Thanks. Uh, good morning, everybody. Uh, I'm happy to field any questions that the group has right now. Um, but we're in full support of this rezoning. Um, and like we said, this will help us advance through OFA's process.
Sure. Good morning. Ashley Shaw, Executive Director with Midtown Cleveland. Um, we are also in full support. We are partnering with NRP as the community partner on the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Project. Um, this has been about almost 10 years in the making. Um, the former Daves market closed back in 2017. Uh, this has been a really, it's always been a really important site for our community members. It's been a third space for our residents as long as the grocery store was there. Uh, continues to be a third space for our residents through a pop-up pilot park that we've been programming on the parking lot. Um, and so as we, as we've looked for and talked to the community about what a new use could be for the site for the last almost 10 years, we knew that it had to be something that gave back to the community and created space for community members to gather. And so um it also uh would likely have to have housing on top of it, just knowing what's appropriate in terms of scale for a corridor like Payne Avenue and what works economically. And so we partnered to go in for Low Income Housing Tax Credit Project or Low Income Housing Tax Credits last year with NRP, uh knowing that there is a high need, not just in our neighborhood, but across the city for that middle-income 60 to 80% AMI housing uh that reaches our early career people, which reaches the people working in the restaurants in the neighborhood. Um, it's many of the people that live in our neighborhood right now. Um, within our service area, uh 90% of the housing is either fair or substandard. And so this is really important to us because it allows us to add housing that's affordable, but it's also clean and safe and um accessible to our community members who need that. Um, one thing you may notice in this um in this project scope is that this, the parking lot that we're programming for the uh pilot park today, uh we refer to that as the score dancing park, um because it really has become a community space that community members have taken over. And um there's a community group who score dances there every Saturday. Um, that site is not included in this project because NRP is part of the deal. Uh, if the project were to move forward, is proposing donating that site to Midtown Cleveland, which gives us property ownership to begin working towards the creation of a permanent park for the community. So there's multiple amenities and and positive things that this brings to the community.
Thank you. Uh, commission members?
Excuse me, Chair. We may also have public comment if we could offer a brief opportunity for that.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is zoning. Okay, so gonna open it up for folks who are uh maybe have comments. And so either you're you're in favor and opponent um that you're not. So we're gonna take any proponents, please keep your comments to one minute, please. There's anybody online? No? No one in the, okay, guess we'll close the public portion. Uh, commission members?
Chair, could we check if there are any opponents on the line?
I don't know. I mean, okay.
I'm just making sure we follow.
All right. I I thought I was clear. We take opponents and no opponents, but no one volunteered. So therefore, again, are there any opponents online who might want to share their comments? And please keep your comments to one minute. Okay, I I gotta hit everybody and I apologize. Um, permission members?
The Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve changing the use area and height districts and parcels of land north and south of Payne Avenue for redevelopment.
I'll second. Thank you. Real call, please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luker?
Yes.
Gray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Slight?
Yes.
Thank you. Good luck. All right, um, the next item concerning zoning uh is a conditional use for pedestrian retail overlay at West 25th Retail Townhomes located at 1468 West 25th Street. And this is also a public forum. So we're gonna hear a commentary first from staff, um then we'll open it up to the public. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh Chairman. Uh, Shannon Leonard, Chief Zoning Administrator. So this is a proposal, as you as you stated, uh to renovate in this uh historic existing building into one floor of commercial space and then two floors of these simple residential uses. And then they will add three new townhouses um planned on the west side of the parcel. Uh, as you can see on the lower left-hand corner for context, oh uh, this is directly across the street from uh the significant investment uh in the Irish Town Bend Park. Uh, and then give you the context again uh from an aerial perspective. Uh, and then notice that the pedestrian retail overlay lot uh goes along West 25th as well as Lorraine here. Uh, thank you. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is the existing building they intend to renovate. Uh, again, there's two units uh uh on the upper floors. And then the first floor is a um a general commercial space. Uh, they are not sure yet who the tenant is. And then immediately to the right of the building, you'll see that there is a fenced-off parking lot. Um, and so the reason why they're here for the pedestrian retail overlay is anytime you have new construction or a change of use or an expansion of use, we have to readjudicate for the uh conditional uses across the board. Uh, and so the first one is that they are proposing parking within the first 40 feet. Uh, as they will probably state that is an existing parking lot. Uh, but again, we have to look at um the fullness of the project that is being proposed here. Uh, and so the off-street parking or loading areas across the public sidewalk, they don't have that because they have the fence, but they do have that parking uh within the first 40 feet. And so the conditions for you to think about uh when approving this conditional use is that the size shape or layout of the subject property does not uh permit placement of parking loading um or the driveway in a more suitable location, or that it's been demonstrated uh by the applicant for the placement of the parking loading or driveway in uh this allowed location would jeopardize the continued occupancy of the subject property uh by uses suited within the pedestrian retail overlay district. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so this is just giving you a quick thing, showing you that they are proposing those parking spaces within the first 40 feet. Uh, and so they also need the conditional use from interior side yard more than uh four feet in width. Uh, in this case, uh the side yard is a parking lot. Uh, in the case of an interior side yard, more than four feet in width and located within 40 feet of the PRO frontage, the subject building will be occupied by residential units, which require the greater side yard area to allow the desirable levels of light and air. Uh, we know the upper floors are residential as well as the townhomes in the back. Uh, next slide, please. And so they are looking for the off-street parking within the first 40 feet, uh as well as a building with an interior side yard more than four feet in width. Um, what I would like to say here today is that with the investment in Irish Town Bend, we would like to request the applicant to withdraw the conditional use for uh A for off-street parking within the first 40 feet. They do not know who their occupant is going to be is in the commercial space in the first floor. Uh, and when they do find out who that occupant will be, they will have to come back for an occupancy permit. And if they really do need that parking uh within the first 40 feet, um, they can seek the conditional use for that at that time. And we'll have a better understanding of the parking needs of whether is it an attorney downstairs, is it a doctor's office, is it a restaurant, is it a coffee shop, how many employees, you know, how much parking do they want to reserve in the back? And so it'd be my strong recommendation that they withdraw A um and come back for that when they know uh when they're seeking the occupancy permit for uh the general commercial space on the first floor.
To be clear, Shannon, we're we're, you're asking us to only potentially look at item E, which is the side yard?
That's correct.
Okay.
And he could come back for um when they're getting the occupancy permit for that first floor tenant. And so we could better understand the parking because right now we know that it's going to be three townhomes. They're providing the parking for those townhomes in the back. And we know there there'll be two condos, if you will, upstairs. So um they are in a transit-oriented development zone, so they essentially don't have to have a parking space. Uh, but if they are seeking a parking space for those tenants upstairs, technically by co-variety two and not all the other spaces that are being proposed here. Uh, the other option is they could just change the site plan um and remove those parking spaces within the first 40 feet and then come back if they decide that they need those parking spaces um in the future. Uh, and then Landmarks, I believe somebody from Landmarks is available to comment because this is a Landmarks project.
We'll take Landmarks, and I see Mr. Booker's here from the architect, and we'll hear your commentary. Okay? Okay. No, I I wanted to listen here from Landmarks first, then we'll take you, Mr. Booker.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You better sit down. I can't guarantee anything.
Good morning, uh Dan Mossen, Secretary of the Cleveland Landmarks Commission. Uh, this project is kind of right in the middle of our design review process. It went to the Historical Ohio City Design Review Committee yesterday, and we have it tentatively scheduled to be on the um Landmarks Commission agenda for next week. Uh, based on the the comments from the local committee yesterday and and talking with Ms. Leonard about you know, what she's proposing. Landmarks is on board with the idea of um kind of putting off the approval of a conditional use to add the parking spaces. So we're fine with the side yard, but um, I agree with the proposal to wait and see what the use of that first floor is and then deal with the parking question when uh when we know who the tenant is.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Booker?
This recommendation is new to me and the developer.
I know. I was watching your face.
And it's it's a little complicated because as um we worked with the development team to try to figure out what to do with this property. And we've been associated with at least one other previous development proposal for this property. There's been one before that. This is the first one that I think um in 10-plus years that actually has a chance of happening. The development team, while we do not know what the retail space is going to be, we recognize that we're only providing, I think it's seven surface parking space. surface parking spaces in addition to two parking spaces for each of the residential, um, units. And the thought was that those seven spaces would be sufficient for employees of any kind of commercial space that might happen on the first floor and provide maybe a few extra spaces that residents could use on some arrangement to be determined for visitors. Um, and as you may be aware, in that specific block of the neighborhood, there's no on-street parking on West Twenty-Fifth Street. Church is very, um, tight with parking, and West Twenty-Sixth has some. Um, but it's a tight, densely parked neighborhood. And, um, our client, TurnDev, is rightfully concerned that they're going to need parking for employees in order to be able to attract a first-floor tenant that's appropriate for that space. And what confuses me a little bit about your suggestion of not including the parking, um, are you saying that we need to remove that existing asphalt? Or simply stripe it and say there's no parking?
You, you could stripe through the chair to the, um, Mr. Booker. You can stripe it to say that there's no parking within that first forty feet. The first, it's not permitted without the conditional use. And so the recommendation would be is once you know who the retail tenant is or this tenant on the first floor is going to be, come back for that, the conditional use for that, for that parking if you really do need it. I think it's hard because the pedestrian retail overlay district, the purpose of it is to protect the historic shopping districts here across the city. Uh, and the parking's not permitted and it requires a conditional use. And because you are constructing townhomes in the back and you're changing the use and, uh, redeveloping the use here, we always look at the, the, um, things in a pedestrian retail overlay district. Um, and that's really across the board no matter what. And so what we're just suggesting here is rather than the, uh, commission making the decision today on your parking within the first forty feet, once you and the development team know who the occupant will be and you're coming back to seek the occupancy permit, if you need those parking spaces in the first forty feet, you could seek it at that time. Conditional use at that time, I think that would be like a fair compromise, um, with the, as it's related to the project itself going through landmarks and within the spirit and intent of the pedestrian retail overlay as well as our transit-oriented development zones.
Hey, I do have one question, and I'm trying to process this. Um, if, if one were to come here to visit someone who lives in one of those townhomes, you're saying that they would not be permitted to park in the surface lot that's there now?
The intention would be that, um, those seven spaces would perform two functions. One, satisfy the employees of whatever, um, retail commercial tenant that is there, whether they have two employees or seven. If they have two and we have an extra five spaces, those could be dedicated to, um, resident, uh, visitors. If the tenant needs all seven, maybe there's a timing or the business is open only certain hours, and then the residents can have use of the parking lot in the after hours. So it's very flexible use right now. It's gonna be very determinate, but seven spaces doesn't seem excessive to me. Um, and we are proposing a ornamental fence and a dense evergreen screen so that whether those parking spaces are forty feet back or ten feet back, um, the result is still the same.
Okay.
And the director, I think, would like to make some comments.
Thank you, Shannon, and to the project team and Landmarks for reviewing this. Um, understanding that this is a area of the city that does have relatively high parking demands, this is also an area of the city that has high pedestrian, bicycle, and transit demand. And so what we're trying to do here is balance those interests and protect the public realm for folks on the sidewalk. That's the intent of the pedestrian retail overlay. Um, the, the city, G C R T A, the Community Development Organization, and the metro parks have been working on plans for the West Twenty-Fifth Street corridor as well as shared and district parking in this area for, um, a long time. And we understand that parking has to be sort of shared and, and every single development can't have exactly the assigned number that it wants within that footprint. So we just encourage, um, the commission to think about the holistic transportation network in this area and, and how our code informs, um, the design guidelines for those for creating that space. And to the applicant, um, understanding what you might need to make the project, we're, we're happy to continue working with you on the staff side to think about transportation demand and how to, um, make the functions that you want on the site work with the transportation assets in the area.
Thank you. Um, I believe I need to open it up for public comment first, then we'll take the commission second. If there's anyone in, um, audience, both here and or online, would like to speak in favor or opponent first, and we'll take opponent second. Anyone in favor? Have you heard none? Um, we would like to entertain comments. Haven't heard none. The public portion's closed. Um, commission members?
I'll, I'll, if this is, that is my, if that's the proposal, I don't personally have an issue with there being cars on the other side of that fence. I think there's gonna be cars on the other side of that fence, whether we stripe it as parking or not. I think the bigger thing is, and I'm not one to very often suggest, uh, postponing things, but I think, I mean, I, I, just to clarify exactly your point that there's no street parking on this portion of Twenty-Fifth, which is sort of comical because it's like the widest street on the west side at that point, and there's plenty of room. Like, there should be street parking to narrow the road, uh, to, like, you could have a lane, parking, bike lanes. Like, you can do it all there, but the city hasn't, I'm sure what the city's solution is for this strip. And I've long been worried that we're spending a lot of money on Irish Town Bend, which will be a park that nobody can get to, uh, because, once again, most people coming to regional amenities are gonna be driving there. So, so I think, I'm, I'm, I'm inclined that I would be interested in the perspective of my colleagues postponing to get a larger, better sense of what the regional parking plan is, what those studies are. Because if we, I fear that if we were to defy the applicant of those additional parking spots, they're not going to be able to easily get a tenant to come back because the tenant's not gonna have the assurance that there's gonna be the parking that they're gonna potentially need. So it's sort of a, uh, uh, twenty-two. But, uh, before making any sort of motion, I'd be interested in hearing from my colleagues.
Thanks. Anyone else?
I tend to agree with, with you, Charlie. I think, uh, sort of zooming out and understanding the global, um, plan would, would be benefit, but I think, you know, I could go either way, but, um, I don't make motions. I can't, I can't, I can't second, so.
As a point of order, Chair, I think we could ask the applicant if he agrees to a postponement.
And basically what I'm postponing, from what I'm hearing here, is whether I tell my client, TurnDev, that they can have asphalt that's striped off and not used, and we get a conditional use, or we postpone everything. Is that kind of my choice?
Well, I would, I would, I, I'm, my philosophy about postponements is we need to have time definite. We don't wanna let this linger. So if we are gonna consider that on this side of the table, then we need to put some, some time constraints on that. So, um, we're not being anti-development in the, in the four walls of City Hall, so.
Chair, I guess to the councilman, I, I guess maybe I'm interpreting what the councilman said slightly different because that seems to be a question beyond the applicant that you're posing. Is that accurate?
Uh, uh, correct. And, and I guess, Mr., Mr. Booker, I would like there to be some assurance that there's going to, like, a net benefit to you from what the city can do within the public realm. So that if, if we decide to take away three spots, which I don't really think is necessary, it's going to now be, be street parking spots that don't currently exist. That would at least be a, a, a net win for you in that now there's parking and people can access the property in a way that they can't currently. Um, so, but I, I, I appreciate that that is something that needs to be determined by the city and is beyond this specific, uh, conditional use.
Thank you for clarifying, Councilman. So to the Chair, to Shannon, I guess the question is, I, I guess I'm having a hard time understanding the value of postponement as it relates to the applicant being able to pursue what he and his client need to do. Um, I also tend to agree with my colleagues. I don't see, without us knowing or having a timeline for the city to say, yes, we can tell you by next date what the plans are for West Twenty-Fifth. It, maybe you have that.
Yeah, uh, so first, first of all, for the two tenants upstairs, he has the parking beyond the first forty feet. We don't have any idea who the tenant on the first floor is gonna be. We're not saying you can't. What I'm, what I was proposing is that we don't even decide the conditional use for that now. When the occupant downstairs comes back with the tenant, they could come for the conditional use at that point, right? You, in that case, so you could do two options here. If you postpone it, the city has tremendous information on what's going on on this section of the city, some of the various plans that have been completed in the last couple of years around Irish Town Bend. We can provide that pretty soon. Or the option is the applicant comes back for the conditional use of the parking in the first forty feet. Because we're not saying no parking at all. We're just saying that first one or two spaces be removed for, you know, whether that's for amenity space for the tenants, whether that's green space for, um, tenant, the residential tenants in this area, in this development, whatever they wanna use that for, but not grant the conditional use in this case at this time. So we can either postpone it and come back, uh, at the next planning commission, or he could come back when he's seeking the occupancy permit for the first floor tenant, right? Um, I think the director might wanna make a statement. Um, but that's, that's the, what, you know, the recommended is here, understanding that, you know, we have, um, side parking lots as the interior side yard across this area as well as across the city. Uh, and then really looking at that first forty feet of parking, I mean, everybody wants as much parking as they can get, right? Uh, and so that's really the concern here is it's not just this project alone, it's projects all across.
I think, Director, I, I would like to say one thing. You know, this is about ma- um, managing expectations. Apparently, the applicant didn't know this was coming. And, and I, I think, you know, I certainly didn't know this is gonna be an issue. So I, I think communication is always key, um, in my personal opinion. So we've lost a little credibility, in my personal opinion, and that's my opinion, may not be the administration's opinion. So, um, I just wanted to say that. Oh, go ahead.
To address the questions about West Twenty-Fifth Street, um, R T A is in the process of developing a B R T corridor project for West Twenty-Fifth from Detroit all the way to Old Brooklyn, as we heard earlier. They're approaching the stage-two design for the project, and so we should, um, be able to know both in twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-eight, what the configuration of West Twenty-Fifth Street will be long-term in terms of on-street parking, as well as what the city could do in the interim before construction. So that's not a far-out thing that we have to create. Those are active, um, projects that are in development that we can coordinate on further.
To the Chair, just wanted to, I guess, make a point of clarification. The, this issue did come up at the Design Review Committee yesterday, and there was a lot of discussion around parking within that first forty feet and how it should be handled, so.
I'm not questioning what happens in the public realm. What I am questioning is, um, having conversations outside these public forums to see if they can come to some sort of conclusion or consensus. Now, now ideally you, you could, right? But sometimes you can't. But at least walking into any public forum, you have an idea what the threats are. That's all. And again, that's, that's, that's procedural stuff that sometimes it happens and sometimes it falls through the cracks. So, I mean, I'm, I'm just pointing out what's obvious to me, okay? Um, commission members, we, we have to make a determination here so we can move on.
To the Chair, this is a little difficult, um, because we're, I think we're all kind of torn with what we wanna do. But I'm gonna go with, um, postponing, maybe, until our next meeting.
But I was, I wanna be clear. We can't let this sort of linger. So we need to put some, something definitely into that if we're gonna go that direction.
I, I don't think we should postpone. I, I don't see any problem with the, what Shannon has proposed. They can talk to a tenant and assure them that they can come back before the city and get those parking spaces. It's not, it's not a foregone conclusion that they'll never get the parking spaces. They just have to come back. But, and, I mean, I, I just, I.
They have to come back anyway.
Yeah, have to come back anyway. And I think it's also, the, to the point that Shannon made, it could be a tenant that wants to turn that into something besides parking. So I, I must stop permanent, and they could just come back and get parking if they want the parking.
Well, to the, mission member, to the Chair, uh, to the Chair, to the commission member, make the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the pedestrian retail overlay with the removal of, uh, I guess, the exception A, uh, for off-street parking located within the forty feet of the pedestrian retail frontage.
And I second.
Thank you. Rule call, please.
Anthony?
No.
Lucre?
Yes.
Gray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Slide?
No.
Thank you.
So you'll come back for the?
Let's get going here. We have a design review item under Near West Design Review. Item number eleven, under that docket, um, it's Steel Yard Dispensary. Who do we have to speak on behalf? I have to swear you, and let's see if I remember that. Okay.
Good morning.
Oh, no, I'm trying to remember that. I don't have it. I don't remember how you swear people in. Anyway. Do you promise, do you promise to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, in this proceeding for the penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Thanks, sorry. I don't do this every day. I'm standing there.
City Planning Commission, my name is Tony Zook. I represent the, uh, Story Steel Yard Project. I am the civil engineer. Um, and then we also have Jason Hartling here, who is the project architect online. You'll have the Story Partners team, uh, there's Jesse Francore, Ed Allen. Um, we also have, uh, Ms. Royal, and, um, we also have Dan Wertz, which is the structural engineer from I M E G Engineering, as well as Corey Sprouse, who is the electrical engineer for I M E G Engineering. And then I would like to pass it to Jesse Francore, who is with Story Partners, who will start the presentation for us.
Thanks. Um, I, I, I just wanna reiterate, we have a really packed agenda. We, we wanna be respectful of everyone's time, but if you can hit the high points and give us information we need, we'll be indebted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, sound check. Can y'all hear me? Oh?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank, uh, thank you to the commissioners in allowing us, uh, to present this project. My name is Jesse Francore. Um, I am the Director of Corporate Development for Story Cannabis and an officer for Assure Fund. So Story Cannabis is gonna be the ultimate operator of this business. Um, Assure Fund is gonna be the beneficial owner of the property. Um, so to date, we have presented this project to the Near West Design Review Committee, um, for final design approval. We did receive unanimous approval subject to recommendations that are addressed here in. Um, we've also presented to the H B R M T C Block Club, um, at the request of Councilwoman Maurer, um, to provide an overview of the project and to address any concerns or questions from, uh, the community where this is located. Um, and again, today, we're presenting this for final approval. Um, so before diving in, uh, Story Cannabis is a multi-state operating vertically-integrated cannabis company with retail, manufacturing, and cultivation operations under management in Arizona, Georgia, Louisiana, Maryland, New Jersey, and Ohio. Next slide, please. Um, together, our executive team and management team has experience in over twenty-four different medical and adult-use markets. In Ohio, we manage four dispensaries, uh, two in the Cincinnati metro area, one in Koshokton and one in the Cleveland metro area. Uh, we have four additional locations that are in various stages of design and construction, one of which is the project that we're reviewing here today. Um, next slide, please. So as part of this design review application, uh, Story and Assure Fund are proposing a new-build construction project located at thirty-two seventy Steel Yard Drive, uh, which is located, uh, essentially on the northern side of the Steel Yard, uh, Common Shopping Center. So the ultimate So the ultimate use will be a state-licensed medical marijuana and adult-use retail dispensary. This is commonly referred to as a dual-use marijuana dispensary. Um, the project consists of a single-story commercial building with a drive-through. Uh, it'll be a total square footage of two thousand six hundred sixty-seven square feet on an approximately one-point-three-acre parcel of land that is presently today uh unimproved land. Uh, the proposed building will stand twenty feet in height with a maximum occupancy of twenty-two persons, including a maximum of ten employees per shift at any given time. Um, the site will feature thirty-five total parking stalls, including two ADA-accessible spaces, uh, twenty-eight thousand nine hundred six square feet of hard-surface area disturbance, which is about forty-eight point six percent of total site acreage, um, and thirty thousand five hundred thirty-three square feet of green space, which is about fifty-one point four percent of total site acreage. Um, access to the property is provided through a privately-owned and maintained street, uh, which is managed by First Interstate Properties, and that is the property management company for the Steel Yard Common Shopping Center. Um, additionally, and as part of the development, streetscape trees and parking lot screening shrubs will be installed along the private frontage to enhance visual appeal um and to comply with landscaping standards. So as stated in the previous slide, the business to be operated at the property will be a state-licensed dual-use marijuana dispensary. Um, excuse me. This is, and it's gonna be a license that's sanctioned through the Ohio Department of Commerce's Division of Cannabis Control. Um, the license is held by an entity named Canoe Hill Ohio Two LLC, and it is one of twelve entities that are licensed or provisionally licensed through the state to operate a dispensary within the corporate limits of the city. Um, the subject property is zone unrestricted industrial, which allows for the use of a state-licensed dual-use marijuana dispensary by right. Um, so there are no additional use-related approvals that we need to receive. Uh, this has been confirmed with the City of Cleveland uh through a com- uh completed state uh formatted notice of proper zoning form. Uh, that was completed by Shannon Leonard on August fifth, twenty twenty-four. Um, in addition to aligning with the City of Cleveland zoning requirements, we also have gotten that use approved by First Interstate Properties. Uh, next slide, please. So I'm gonna tone, uh, turn it over to Tony, who's going to address the D-RAC recommendations um and also the technical design aspects of this project.
Thank you, Jesse. Um, I'm gonna try and be as quick as possible, just give.
To be clear, we don't, we don't, since this, so if you don't get too technical, we'd be appreciative. If it has something to do with the, the physical environment aesthetics of site layout, we, that's what we're interested in, okay?
You know, I think specifically these D-RAC recommendations that were given to us at that uh motion form are very specific and things that we wanted to talk about. So number one, the wave-finding signage is something that they recommended that we show in our plans um in our renderings as well as our site plan. We are showing wave-finding signage as well as a drive-through lane line now, drive-through directional arrow, and lettering in the pavement. Um, number two, be mindful of lighting. Avoid starts uh LED blowout. In the lighting plan from the electrical engineer, we are making sure it is noted um that there's lights that are within the parking lot, do not have that issue surrounding the property. Uh, number three, consider lighting parking and especially landscape, heavier softening, or even seating area. Uh, just want to make a quick note that the parking lot presented accommodates the anticipated peak customer demand, in addition to two ADA-compliant spaces and ten designated employee spaces. Uh, the proposed use of the property necessitates the total amount of parking stalls provided. Notably, that the zoning district that we are in then does not impose a maximum limit on off-shoot parking spaces for the commercial retail uses under the City of Cleveland zoning code. Um, they wanted to make sure that we have an enclosed dumpster. We do have that within our presentation to show you, but it is part of our plan. Uh, number five, context photos of the area. Uh, in our presentation, we do show more context, and it's more of like a 3D representation of what's around us in the Steel Yard Commons area. Number six is a bit important. They wanted us to uh provide sidewalk connections from the public sidewalks that surround us um in our site plan as well as any of our uh renderings. It is shown that there is public uh accessibility now added to our site plans to make sure that any of the public sidewalks that surround us do connect and go straight to our building. Um, and then lastly, number seven, they did want us to consider pushing the building closer to the frontage of the property line to, again, make it more pedestrian-friendly for the surrounding developments. Um, we did want to make note that there are several factors that are going against that recommendation or consideration. We are doing everything in our power to make sure that this is pedestrian-friendly for everyone around us. If you wanted to go to the next slide? This is just a overview or a highlight of just our site, which you can see in the middle. Surrounding us is all the commercial built upon properties within Steel Yard Commons. Next slide. This is the existing conditions plan. This makes note is there are several utility easements. The front, just, I'm sorry, go back one slide.
Probably delayed its drying.
Just okay. Two utility easements that we are making sure that the building and its surrounding parking lot is outside of. Um, and then there are two driveway connections within the privately-maintained road to the west of us that we're connecting it to. Next slide. This is our site plan, civil engineering site plan, which, again, shows the parking spaces. As you can see, that circulation pattern, which is dual or two-way within the parking lot, turns into a singular way directional when you get into the drive-through. Um, we do have that wave-finding, um, you have the directional arrow, and it also says "drive-through" in pavement. There is the singular lane line designates the drive-through aspect as it rounds the building. And then it is single uh one-way exits the property um and takes a right out of the property there. There is a zoom-in that I added to this plan that does show that public accessibility sidewalk that connects to Steel Yard Drive and the surrounding public street uh outside of this block area. Um, again, that does promote pedestrian accessibility to our site and the surrounding commu- next slide. Then to turn it over to Corey Sprouse with IMAG Engineering, who's gonna talk very briefly about the electrical and the lighting aspect of the project.
Uh, good morning, everybody. Uh, my name is Corey Sprouse. I'm the electrical designer for the project. What you're seeing right now is a, a very standard lighting layout for the, the site that was designed. Uh, the, this layout maintains an average one-foot candle light level around the parking lot area. Um, site fixture height and style has been designed to match adjacent, adjacent properties with a pole height of thirty-five feet and the fixture style itself being a low-profile LED. And then to touch on the uh comment number two from the DRAC Committee, um, while this plan doesn't explicitly show a fixture schedule, um, the fixture lumen levels do not go over seventy-five hundred. And given that we're averaging one-foot candle at thirty-five feet, there should be no stark uh LED blowout issues.
That brings us to what the building is. Uh, this is a technical drawing of exterior elevations, just showing building height and material. A clean, straightforward design that conforms to what the Steel Yard Design Commons require. Next slide. We have our trash enclosure. That was item number four from the D-RAC recommendations. It's already included. Next slide. Our overall floor plan showing how the customer would go through this space. Roughly forty-eight percent of the floor space is considered front of the house, with the majority of the space then being back of the house dedicated to employees and security. Next slide. Uh, our site plan, we added landscaping per the D-RAC recommendation, and you can see where we have the sidewalk connection coming in from the southwest corner going to our front door. The existing conditions on the site is that there is nothing. It's an empty lot. There's no trees. It's, it's grass. Uh, next slide. This is our aerial context, just giving you an idea of what that project would look like with our neighbors. Um. Let's see, we have Panda Express to the east. The Key Bank is our south partner. We have a Steak and Shake and an automotive car wash. We're really fitting into what the Steel Yard Commons is. Next slide, please. To give you an idea of what our renderings, this is an outside perspective during the day. Next slide. It is our evening view of that same. It gives an idea of that we're just doing a soft light. We're not trying to do light bulbs. We're providing safe pedestrian access, you know, make sure that it's a well-lit building without being naughtlessly bright. Next slides. That's, again, a dusk view. Next slide. Uh, drive-through was recommended, recommended. We needed wave-finding. We're doing pavement. We're doing signage. There's parking, striping. Next slide. And we're just continuing walking around the building in our rendering view, just giving an idea of what the materials and the overall aesthetics of the building would be. Next slide. And the next slide. Material board, again, going over what the materials of the building are. It follows what the Steel Yard Commons recommendations are. Next slide. Uh, interior finishes. You guys aren't interested in that. Next slide. Uh, next slide. This is our exterior signage package. These are where the exterior signs will be located. You saw them on the renderings. Next slide. These are the technical drawings for those signs. Next slide. And that's the back of the house, and that concludes our presentation. If you have any questions, fire away. I, I believe um both the Council and the CDC are in support. I don't know if there's anyone online who might want to speak to that before we open it up. I suppose not. Um, Commission members? I mean, you know what? Staff, any staff comments?
Sure, I'll be happy to give a, a brief overview. Um, staff and the Councilmember and CDC worked with the applicants to have some additional community conversation over the last couple of weeks. Um, we're in support of this use in Steel Yard Commons. Uh, it is a nice, um, it fits well with the, the nature of that shopping center, and so are in support of the application.
Thank you. Commission members?
I, I, I have like ninety-eight puns running through my head right now, so I'm just gonna spare you, so. Yeah, we got, we got a couple of gentleman stuff.
Anyone else? Sorry, I know where this is going. Uh, to the Chair, um, I'd like to move that we uh move forward with NW two thousand twenty-five dash zero one-one story steel yard, um, per what is written here on the screen as well as in our packet. Uh, the applicant has sufficiently addressed the concerns and questions from Design Review, um, and has detailed how they will respond to the respective suggestions. Um, and so with that being said, I move forward, or recommend that we move forward, uh, advancing this.
I second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Booker?
Yes.
Gray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Slide.
Yes. Good luck.
Just curious, what are the hours gonna be?
Um, Jesse, do you have the hours of operation?
Uh, yes, let me check.
No, no, it's not relevant for this. I'm just curious.
It, it's, I, I think it's gonna be nine to nine.
Same as the restaurant. All right, thank you. Um. We have another design review, um, back under, under the Far West Design Review docket, um, item number twenty-one, four-six-two-two Rocky River Drive demolition. Um, who might be here? Is it someone here on behalf? Sounds like, no, I'm gonna have to swear them in, I believe. They're here on behalf of the applicant. Um. Is he's online?
Yes, I'm online. Good morning, guys.
Hi, I'm gonna just swear you in, since this is a design review item. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth for this matter now in hearing under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Thank you. Proceed, please.
Um, we just have this, uh, do it very quick for you guys. We have a property to be demolished, and there is a site plan that we have. Uh, we're planning to build another existing home on it slash office. And uh, the process is gonna be tear down the old, the Houston house, uh, haul the old debris out, take the basement walls out, foundation as well, bulkhead the sewer cab, backfill it, and prepare for a new build as soon as the, 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 the final approval get done with the city. And uh, basically, that's, that's all what we have on it. There's nothing much to talk about except the demo new build soon.
Thank you. Do we have any staff comments?
Is Adam Davenport online? Okay, I can address this one as well. Um, there was a lot of discussion in Design Review about the, the site finishing after demolition. The city does have standards for that, that the applicant would have to meet. And so although Design Review discussed specifics, we feel that city standards cover that and are supportive of the demolition request.
Thank you, Director.
I'll, and I'll make the motion because there is also a plan to go redevelop this in the, in the not-too-distant future. Uh, so I move the approval of the demolition at forty-six twenty-two Rocky River Drive.
My second.
Anthony?
Yes.
Booker?
Yes.
Gray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Slide.
Motion carries. Thank you. Um, the next design review item under Far West Side is item number seven. West Cleveland Veterans Housing, located at three-three-one-one West Seventy-third Street. And I need to swear you in. Um, do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth for this matter now in hearing under penalty of perjury?
I do.
All right, it's all yours, sir.
Thank you, uh, Commission members and Chair. Um, as mentioned, I'm presenting the Cleveland West Veterans Housing Development. Um, it is an affordable housing development uh through OFA's Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program. Um, it is located on West Seventy-third and Neville, where you see here um in red. I am jo- I am joined online by a member of the ownership team, uh, CHN Housing Partners, and I believe the contractor. Uh, what you're seeing on the context map is, is really a figure-ground image of really the residential neighborhood that this development occurs within. Um, and I should restate that as affordable housing, this is also supportive housing, primarily uh directed at veterans. Um, and although it's not specifically senior, there is an expectation that these residents would be senior, um, as they are uh at risk, uh potentially chronically homeless. These images here are of the context on West Seventy-third, again reinforcing the really strictly residential neighborhood as well as on Neville. And then next slide will show um probably the previously abandoned, uh, but since demolished, uh, industrial building also on Neville. These are also some context images in the area, looking at really the, the siding, gabled roofs, porches, again, really residential context. This is moving a little bit further away, uh, more commercial. The site plan is, uh, you can see the building is pushed up against that ex- that northwest corner of West Seventy-third and Neville. There is pedestrian um access off of Neville as the building front, I'm sorry, on West Seventy-third is the building fronts there. Uh, due to the kind of subtle topography of the site, the building uh finish floor has to be raised up, so there are steps to that entrance, but there is also an accessible ramp off of West Seventy-third. There is also uh an entrance off of the rear parking area. The perimeter is, um, there is a perimeter fence uh along the Neville and West Seventy-third frontages. It's a decorative uh ornamental fence that you see in the bottom left along the back property line, which is uh butts the railroad right of way. It's, it's a board-on-board fence. Um, as, a- and, and so the, the site being secured, uh, there's uh primary vehicular access off of Neville that you see a boulevard entrance gate. Um, if we can go back just real quick. Um, on Neville, uh, just to the left or west of that entrance gate, um, you'll see uh there's a trash pickup. Now, this is a bit of an older site plan, but trash is maintained inside the building. There's no exterior dumpster potential dumping uh concerns. Um, one of the comments from Design Review on the bottom of the, of the plan inboard of the building, you'll see some rectangles. Those are resident gardens. Design Review had a comment about the material of those resident garden, uh, raised garden beds. Those are, those are all wooden. Um, they're within the secured property, uh, so we would. Those are, those are all wooden, um, they're within the secured property, uh, so we would, we would hope we wouldn't have to comply with right of way planter materials, so. These floor plans really show kind of i- in, uh, colored images, the, the green is, um, is representing the residential spaces, so on the left-hand side is the first floor, the blue and the purple are the commercial areas which are pushed to that exterior corner, and then residential, um, kind of at the, at the outer legs, on the upper floor it is primarily residential. Next slide please. Images of the facade, really trying to take that context, uh, from the surrounding neighborhood, um, the residential materials, which is primarily horizontal siding and, uh, fiber cement panel siding on the upper floors. Maintaining a brick base around the entire, um, uh, perimeter of the building, maintaining that, that durable material. Um, and the top image is, is the, uh, Neville facade, you can see on the corner, we're, we're showing kind of a porch element, again, really trying to relate this, this residential, uh, context. Next slide please. Um, the lower images are, uh, in intention to give us a sense of scale of this three-story building. A majority of the homes are two-story, but they do have, uh, gable ends, we, we feel that it's, it's still within that, um, the, the scale of, of, of the, the neighborhood. Next slide please. Some more images from inside, uh, the property. And you can see on the bottom, uh, those re- raised resin garden beds, um, the, the parking lot. Uh, one of the comments from designer view was the quantity of parking being potentially senior, being, uh, supportive housing. Uh, this parking ratio of approximately, or less than one to three, um, one parking space per three dwelling units has been proven uh, multiple times to be really appropriate, so we're not overburdening the surrounding neighborhood with parking. Next slide please. Um, an image of, uh, night image with some extremely bright lights on that first floor. Next slide please. I don't know what they're doing in there, but, um, a material board of, uh, again, the, the brick that we're proposing on the first floor and then, uh, siding, uh, and roofing for above, next slide please. A landscape pa- plan which we are, are proposing, um, street trees and, uh, perimeter, um, perimeter plantings, the, what is shown as lawn in the, the upper right-hand corner along Neville, uh, kind of in that, that corner, there's going to be an at-grade basin that will be, uh, for water and quality, water quality control, um, that will be fully within the, uh, secured perimeter. Next slide please. And I think that this slide and the next slide, images of, of the proposed plantings. And, there we go. And this final is an image of the, uh, proposed lighting, um, s- um, parking lot lighting. There would, there would be perimeter lighting around the, uh, the West Seventy-third and Neville frontages, all built, building mounted to provide, uh, kind of ambient lighting, so. And I believe that is the end of the presentation. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, um, any staff comments? Guess you're the staff today, huh?
That will be me again, so the neighborhood planner, Nate Lowell, for both the last one and this case is out on vacation this week, um. The staff comments really revolve, understanding this is here for schematic approval, just asking them, encouraging them to go back and look at some of the, um, furnishings a little bit more to ensure consistency in design across the planters, the fences, the bike racks, et cetera, in terms of the back plaza area. And specifically around the bike rack design, you have that sort of nose in, which, um, our, our local ordinances require, um, bike racks.
Lolly pops, yeah.
Yeah, U shape or lolly pops or things like that, so just some recommendations around those items.
Um, mission members and, and be mindful of the comments that were made and then put that in your motion.
I will, um, I'll just make one comment and I'll make a more, make a comment then I'll add another, or make a motion, um, and it's really to the city, um, and to the, like, as you, you need to push the city in the public realm, because this is a kind of a, like, this is very close to Dave's Mercado, it's a good but I, it's a very daunting place, I think, for people to walk or roll just fifteen hundred feet or so away to the grocery store at Ridge and Dennison. So like, we need to do some improvements to that area in the public realm, so people don't get hit by cars. That's, that's my one big comment.
Before you make your, I, I just wanna thank you for developing, um, housing for veterans, um, it's a great need. We should do more, we should come up with different products and different ways that people, they can, anyone should live sort of nobly, as noble as they can, and, uh, I commend you guys.
Appreciate that, yeah, agreed, thank you.
Uh, schematic approval, including the conditions from Far West Design.
My second.
Roll call please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Fluker?
Yes.
Gray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
And Slay.
Yes.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Okay, well, we're barely putting a business agenda, so we're gonna have to pick it up, people, um. We have another design review item under Euclid Corridor Buckeye Design Review, uh, item number thirteen, and it's the Iris and Bert, uh, Wallstein Center. Address is, uh, eleven, one hundred Euclid Avenue. And I need to, I need to swear you guys in. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but this truth for this matter now in hearing under penalty of perjury? Thank you. You're free to. Okay.
Yeah, so we'll, um, I'll be as brief as possible, um, however, please stop me, uh, there's some questions, I know you'll save them to the, you know, towards the end, but I'll get through pretty quickly. But we're looking for, uh, schematic approv- approval for, you know, the site planning concepts, the building itself, and the landscape is the primary, uh, goal here today. Um, we, uh, the building itself is a forty thousand square foot three-story building on a very prominent site, this is a site that University Hospitals has been preparing for twenty years, when they bursted Vision twenty-ten with the new Sidemen Cancer Center, the Center for Emergency Medicine, and then there's a lot of demolition projects in that front yard right on Euclid Avenue. Uh, they always had planned for our Center of Excellence to be here and pick the right project to finish out that mall that was there, sort of as a temporary mall. It was very transient, just getting people from A to B. And right now, they've came up with, uh, with through Iris Wallstein, of the, um, the concept to, to really emphasize the mission to heal, to teach, to discover, and this building will house patient education, simulation center for medical, uh, uh, procedures, it'll have a, a large event center. University Hospital is as larger than it, as it is, as an academic medical center, doesn't have its own conference center, so they finally would get one with this project, so it's kind of pull all that together right at the front door, and there'll be medical conferences and so on and so forth. Can you please? And this is Iris with that model, and she, uh, is the lead donor on the project, and so it's named after her and her husband. And, um, this whole project's gonna be a hundred percent philanthropically funded, so construction, um, won't begin until that happens. Uh, but the timeline on the next slide, um, shows that we're gonna, you know, we're getting through, you know, schematic design is just finishing up, so it's great timing to be in front of you. Um, we're planning on, um, getting some approvals in Ju- June for the board to move forward into the, the rest of the design phases. Finish construction documents in the first of next year, and then construction starting, um, February, March, twenty-twenty-six. Shook Construction is the construction manager that's helping us on this project, and then we'll be telling you in the future, this is the location right on Euclid Avenue, right in front of the Center for Emergency Medicine, and a petty corner from Severance Hall. These are the, uh, neighbors on the north side, neoclassical, classical, all different types of, uh, English Gothic with the Church of the Covenant styles. Um, and then on the south side, this is the north side, the, the next slide please, the south side has the, the newer buildings, uh, that include um, the E H Patient Parking Garage, upper right, uh, Center for Emergency Medicine, Sidemen Cancer Center, and of course the, uh, Allen Library for Case Western. So that's the, the context. Okay, the next slide, we have, um, you know, the issues we really had was, we wanted to make sure we preserve in the yellow box the visual of the main kind of iconic image of University Hospitals, which we'll get to in the next slide. But really, we had to avoid a steam tunnel from Medical Center Company, that's the dashed yellow, and we have a one point seven acre site. And, and so we, we positioned the building to the right, uh, um, or to the west of that, that steam tunnel. The next slide shows the iconic entrance, and we didn't wanna put this in the front, because this is really an inviting metal panel kind of guiding you up to, uh, Leonard Tower. Uh, have performed full site surveys, and the next slide shows, uh, the trees, there's eight trees that will come down as part of this project that are greater than, um, eight inch caliper. Um, we're still on the plan, because there's other master plan that's involved in the campus, that we might be locating other trees on the site to another location at a later time. This shows the, how the building with the views of the architecture, it links in galleries and entrances to Severance Hall, to, uh, this Calvin Smith Oval, to the, uh, intersection of, uh, University Drive and, uh, and, um, Euclid Avenue, views right to the Sidemen Cancer Center and so on, so this is really is locked in by the architecture on the north side, which is really using Iris as her name, the Irish the Flower, kind of with the pedals coming off of the building. The backside of the building or the side that faces the emergency department is very regular and more diagonal like the rest of the campus. The first floor has the two hundred and fifty seated, um, event center, galleries around the perimeter, yellows the public circulation, and then, uh, then a cafe on the upper left, the galleries will be free to the public. So we really wanna make this site as a destination place now, not just a transient pass-through space. Just, we can kind of flip through these pretty quickly, this is a gallery view on the inside, the main pond course, three stories up. Art galleries, this end wall, the next slide shows it's, you know, continues down, this gallery faces Severance Hall at the end, like this. There'll be sculptures and all kinds of things, with the windows, it'll be pretty daylight, so at nighttime it would be very animated on Euclid Avenue. The second floor has a two-story ballroom, so that's the void in the middle, and then we have a simulation center in the purple, and then of course, building support in the gray in the upper right. Third floor, um, well, it's, there's a few images, this is, there's a outdoor patio, there's two of them actually, there's an upper patio on the third floor and a lower patio, and they connect on the outside, once again, have engagement off of Euclid Avenue. Uh, the third floor has classrooms, education classrooms, and, and executive boardroom, and then the art depository. This building will ha- house some of the most important artwork that University Hospitals has in its large collection. But the art curator will be office here, this is the view, um, of that upper level um, of the conference center, and you'll see across the street to, to, um, the Sidemen and Church of the Covenant. Uh, this is the view on the upper patio looking down to the lower, thank you. And the boardroom facing Sidemen. Uh, and there's, uh, steam tu- uh, steam and, uh, the other utilities in the, in the basin, basement. The site plan concept basically is, um, you know, having, uh, there's a valet staging, which is the drive that curls around on the left, uh, which will not be open most of the time, but it will be, uh, a plaza to the amphitheater, so it can be events, whether it's, uh, bands, whether it's food court, um, wedding venues, things like that, it's a destination. The cul-de-sac, the teardrop that you see is the main drop-off. The issue is, we don't wanna have parking and backup for valet on Emergency Drive, that's where the ambulances will traverse, so we're trying to be very deliberate. One of the comments on the, from yesterday, uh, from the board was, th- you know, they wanted to see more landscape and less hardscape, so that's gonna be a challenge, we have permeable pavers and different things we're doing, but it'll be a challenge to, to meet all those other goals, but we're gonna think through it and, and, and deal with, but we're, we are creating this, uh, as you see, this very nice landscaped area, kind of a little bit of a forest around the amphitheater. The drop-off will have a very large fifteen-foot-high sculpture from Iris Wallstein's corporate offices, and then once again, the views, the connectivity, and the, really, the, the, this focal point is also going to the patient parking garage and the tower that's there in the corner, and potentially there's a skybridge that may come across and connect up as well, so we're kind of really wedging the view, focusing on the tower, and the emergency department will have some additional signage in the future to make sure we can still make that visible as well. And then the next slides, I think, show some, uh, uh, these are the sculptures we're gonna relocate to the site. The amphitheater, and then the next couple slides show some ideas of what it could look like, uh, when it's populated with, uh, different venues, here's a wedding that could be out there. The next one is a, a, a concert. With some fireworks, so, um, you know, fun space, this is the, sort of the main entrance view, um, we got the, the three-story building, you have this wall on the left that's gonna match the fins on the building, and that's to block the ED traffic or the visibility from ambulances, and because it's a very personal uh, occurrence there, we wanna make sure that, that we give, we expect the families will not have a lot of visibility to that. Um, the emergency department also recommended, I don't want a lot of windows on the facade facing them, so people feel like they're in a, in a bubble. This is our Euclid Avenue, looking over the median at our project and the main entrance on the, the right. A little closer up here, we have a canopy, which was a, a request from some donors on the project, but we didn't want to interrupt the entrance two-story feature, so we have it kind of zigzag across and kind of become its own shape that defines a, a courtyard with some sculptures that's gonna be there. Um, this is the view from Severance Hall looking at the building, you can see the lower gallery is where those two pillars are, so there's a glass railings there. The materials, we're gonna make this very monolithic, uh, Equitone is the material we're choosing to use, but really make this, uh, very, uh, streamlined, not a lot of complicated materials. We don't wanna compete against the brick of the University Hospitals, the metal panels, the other stone, the limestones and all of that, we wanna keep it simple, uh, just some details we can skip, skip over. And then, uh, we, we have, uh, the glass railings, aluminum, uh, for the storefronts, uh, louvers, uh, pavers on the patio. One of the roofs that you can actually look down on from the patio will have a ballasted roof, so at least it'll look nice and clean. Uh, potential skybridge in the future, not coming here today with this. Uh, the viewer that, the, the, um, emergency, uh, drive elevations, there's a little small loading dock, there will not be semi-trucks on this road. Uh, they'll go to the main materials handling bay and downsize to some box trucks, box trucks that they need. And just some more views of the bridge. And one more. And then the landscape concept, uh, as we, uh, were in those renderings, it's got several levels, we have the, um, we have the, the green area on the left, we call that sort of the forest area, and that area will be kind of nestle in that amphitheater that we're, we're, we're showing with grass, where you see bullet one, uh, in the amphitheater, we were considering turf, we may do that as well. These are some of the images that show what it could look like with the grasses, with the, there's a, so a metal perforated fence that we're gonna be utilizing. And then the next three slides are really just, uh, three levels of, uh, the, the views of the landscaping, looking back at the building at a little low seating wall, it might be wood, it might be concrete, we're still working on that, and then the different, uh, the tree spe- species and specimens and some of the lower uh, bush plantings and some flowers, and then the perennials and, and different other, uh, 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 landscaping amenities. And then we're gonna have different, we're gonna have a lot of different paving type, we're gonna have some, some, um, uh, colored concrete, some permeable pavers, um, some, on the right, you see some stones that are gonna be out in the front, where you see the light green yard in front of the Wallstein, we'll have some rocks, there's a, there's a bus, uh, station right there for, uh, for the RTA and, and we'll, those, um, these are additional places that people can sit, they also protect cars from jumping up and going into the galleries, uh, you know, protected from a security standpoint. And that's the, uh, extent of our, our presentation, if I, if I was quick.
Thank you, um, we appreciate it, um, any staff comments?
I think she had a coughing fit and had to.
I can relay, relay those, I'm the chairman of the, uh, Euclid Corridor Committee, so I'd like me to give.
I would just like to make some commentary, I, I, you know, my commission, my fellow commissioners, I have comments, but I can say what you've done here as, as an institution, healthcare institution, goes above and beyond what I've seen going on in this city, you've created like, very thoughtful about view corridors, you created outdoor space, you embrace the fact that people actually walk, right, there's a lot of pedestrians, you have university traffic, you have, so I, I, I have to say, this, this is the first, you know, beneath schematic design, you've done a, a wonderful job. Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, can we just, can we entertain a commission and, uh, commission members?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, if possible.
I would like to hear from, um, staffers.
Okay.
But, um.
Now, we can just include the, uh, the recommendations from designer view, they're pretty straightforward, just like the site plan, like.
Hello.
Hi, Kim.
Um, during the meeting yesterday, the, um, project was very well received. During the meeting yesterday, the project was very well received. There's a lot of excitement for this area with this new facility going in. So overall, the committee supported it and.
And lastly and most importantly, you're actually allowing the public to see art, right? You have access to it. Oftentimes it goes in the four walls and we have no idea what, what we have at a lot of the institutions. So I'm going to turn it over to any commission members.
I'd like to move approval for schematic design of EC 2025 dash zero thirteen with the conditions recommended by Design Review.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Anthony.
Yes.
Luca.
Yes.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Slight.
Motion carries. Good luck. Thank you. Alrighty.
After your intro, I'm going to recuse myself.
Oh, gotcha. Alrighty. Where's Tara? All right, you better put your track shoes on. You got five items on the pub, a public, even public guard, so. I know, but we also have mandatory referral season.
We will be quick, I promise.
All right.
Introduce the first project, the Noaka Building mural. I believe Lindy Burt is here.
Tara, before you get going, I'm going to recuse myself for this one as a member of the Noaka Board and I'll be back.
Thank you. This was unanimously approved at the Downtown Flats Design Review Committee on May 8th. We got a letter of support from Councilwoman Stephanie House Jones, whose word this is in. I think it's an excellent application as far as how it's treated on the building, the vibrancy of color getting added to the neighborhood and the thoughtfulness that went into the design itself. But I am going to turn it over to Lindy to go through her presentation.
Okay. Good morning to the commission members. Thank you. I'm Lindy Burt from Noaka, Northeast Ohio Area Wide Coordinating Agency, and we are proposing for your consideration the design of the building mural project. The photos you see before you show the facade of the Noaka Building and upper left corner looking west along Superior Avenue. And then these photos here show the area where we plan to apply the mural. That's the east wall, the largest wall. And then, and then, I'm sorry, if you go back. And then the mural will wrap around the building and be on the northern wall on the left there, and then the smaller lower wall on the right. Next slide, please. So for this project, we did conduct a call for artists and awarded, based on selection process, to artist Lizzie Aaronhalde. She's based in Akron. As discussed, the mural would wrap around the, both the east and the north sides of the Noaka Building. The application would be with exterior paint and we would budget for the maintenance of the mural in our annually, an annual basis. Here you see the concept for the mural. It's representative of Noaka's. We asked artists to create a, a design that represents Noaka's mission, which is transportation and environmental planning. So in the mural, you see concepts of different types of transportation, pedestrian, bike. You see train in the background there, bus, auto, traffic. In the center, upper background, you see the rural, you see a farm, which represents the rural counties of the Noaka region. And then of course, the downtown skyline showing Cleveland as the center. We also have native species of plants in the mural, the cone flower, and that's American reed grass. And then those bamboo looking plants are actually horsetail. Those are planted in the parking lot located to the north of the building as part of Noaka's green infrastructure project, which was installed several years ago. Next slide, please. This shows the mural concepts for the north side of the building, a blue heron and more horsetail there. And then of course, environmental planning focuses on water quality. On the prior slide, we did have windmills, so air and water quality is within our scope of work as an agency. Next slide. So next steps on this project are to go through the city permitting process and developing a safety plan for right of way because the east thirteen through the east side of the building does have sidewalk and right of way. And our plan is to install the mural some.
Thank you. Mission members?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Anthony.
Yes.
Luca.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Sergeant. Oh, he's not here. And Slight.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right. You're up again for item number two.
And this is the Friends of Impet Park Pool Deck mural. The pool house had come before you some time ago for another mural by the same artist. It turned out wonderful. Again, this is not in a Design Review District. The Friends of Impet Park are working with the city on a license agreement. And this is basically an extension of what's there already, except that they're doing the perimeter or proposing the perimeter of the pool deck, deck. And they have worked very closely with Councilman Slight and other members of the community. And I'm in support of this as well. I'll turn it over to, I'm sorry.
Nora.
Thank you. What am I doing?
Oh, three, three.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I was before you almost exactly a year ago for the first part of this, the, the pool house wall. So I wanted to just give a quick report out. I know we are really limited on time, but we had over 300 residents participate in the installation of the mural last summer. It was a huge success and we really want to build on that momentum. So appreciate your approval last year. The Friends of Impet Park, just by way of background, it's a 35 acre park. It's one of the largest, if not the largest city park in Cleveland. And we are committed to community engagement and reclaiming public space. As Councilwoman Slight said last year, there's virtually no public art. And so this was a real priority for folks. And so we're looking forward to building on that. So you can go ahead to the next slide. This is just showing, preparing the space last year, the, the mural took up the entirety of the, the pool house. Again, this was a really project driven by the community. So we had, again, 300 folks participate in the project. So those just prepping the space, projecting and drawing on last year. Go ahead, the next slide. You can keep going. These are just some of the visuals of how the installation went. So again, this just shows that paint by number process where we were able to engage a ton of people. And that's just sort of a collage of all of the different folks that were participating in the installation of the projects. Again, this was really leveraging the legacy of the park as a former farm. It was one of the last active farms in the city of Cleveland, so building on that legacy. To try to sweeten things up here, we did include Councilman Slight in the picture with his kids there.
And Director Nichols.
Yes, sorry. And Director Nichols petting the, the dog. Yes. That just gives you a visual of where the pool house is situated in the park. Go ahead, the next slide. Go ahead, the next slide. Again, that's just a visual of where the, the pool deck is in relation to the, another visual that this area where the seating is will be where the, the pool deck mural will go in. Go ahead, the next slide. This was just, we drew inspiration from a pool in New York City that we thought was really interesting. The one thing we did do is we scaled back our design just to be on the perimeter for the purposes of not being distracting to the lifeguard towers. And so we're just doing the perimeter also from a cost perspective because the, the materials are much more expensive when they're paints that are resistant to chlorine and other chemicals. So we will just be doing the perimeter, as you can see here from that initial rendering. That'll draw the colors from the other mural that's just around the corner from it. Go ahead, the next slide. And then this is right here, if you go to the next, go ahead, the last slide. These are the paint materials. The mural artist Bernadette met with a paint expert who made recommendations of both the paint to use and then the coating materials as well. And our plan is to install ideally in advance of the, the pool season this year.
Commission members?
I'm going to start approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Anthony.
Yes.
Luca.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Slight.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nora.
All right. All right, Tara, marathon, let's go.
Okay, this project is, for those who call here home, this is one of the several projects that are part of the Mayor's Transformative Arts Fund. This was one of our awardees, artist Jordan Wong, who's the lead artist on the project. He's working with his institutional partner, Grace Chen, which I believe she may be joined online. It was unanimously approved at the Euclid Corridor Buckeye Design Review yesterday. It's in a very, it's a very needed project in a very important space in our city, in Asia Town. There's been a lot of heavy engagement with the community and the artists. And with that said, I, I love this for this community. I'm going to turn it over to Jordan. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to share our project and vision. Tara, you did such a great job of an introduction that we can skip a couple of slides. So next slide, please. Next slide. All right, excellent. So our project really builds off of previous conversations and community engagement that was done in 2022. It's important to note this. This was conducted by Marika Shiroiri Clark, who is our urban environmental designer on the project. She worked with Chunian Zheng of Cleveland Urban Design Collaborative and as well as Midtown Cleveland to interact with the community, ask them, you know, what would they like to see in a public park? Things like green spaces, you know, places to sit, you know, shaded areas and things like that. But one notable piece of input, next slide, was voice from the community, a neighborhood parent who said, if you build something for adults, they'll just go with their adult friends. But if you build something for kids, and whole families will go and they'll bring the community together. And that's really been a powerful sentiment at the core of, of our project and public art installations. We've also built upon those community engagement sessions this year at last year's Mid-Autumn Festival, a November community meeting in Asia Town, as well as Lunar New Year celebration, just asking, you know, more ideas on, on what they would like to see. And the site we're focusing on is Asia Town Square Dancing Lot, which is on Payne Avenue between East 33rd and 32nd, one of the old day use parking lots. And we are working on five public art installations, three of which are smaller, but the two are more large scale, which we received design approval on. So if you look at the, our site plan, there will be an entrance gate that welcomes visitors into the site, which is right across from a large scale illuminated mural or lightbox, as well as the smaller elements. And I want to just be clear that we also have included kind of these like green spaces. This is not part of our TAF project, but is kind of part of the future visioning for a permanent park. Slide. So along those themes of play, we are working with JP Costello, our fabric here, to construct these multi-tiered playful seating installations and to add even more play into the space and part of these. There will be these colorful icons, as well as Chinese and Asian characters on the sides. Slide. We're working on three customized ping pong tables, each in, with a unique laser cut net artwork, as well as individualized like colored finishes, a series of new planters fabricated out of aluminum that will feature artwork by three selected emerging Asian artists, Tal Wen, Lady Aguan, Nick and Nick Lee. There's some examples of their works. Slide. And then we're moving on to the larger elements. So this is our entrance gate. The two characters at the top were selected through community input and survey, and it's the character for Hung, which means perseverance, and An, which is peace. There's also other Asian motifs and the most, one of the most exciting parts about this is these tiles, which will feature more iconography, Asian characters and elements that actually rotate. So the piece is interactive. This is our installation plan, as well as a mockup of the installation. Slide. And then our last large scale element is this lightbox or illuminated mural. I want to make note of the central image or motif and character, which is based off of Kuangying, which is a Chinese mythology, mythological character, the goddess of compassion and, and peace. Character is also found in other Asian cultures. There's also the four cardinal animals in Chinese mythology, the Azure Dragon of the East, Black Taurus of the North, White Tiger of the West, and Vermillion Bird of the South, which, you know, act as themes of finding your way throughout life. And last, but not least, I want to share this phrase that was in the corner there in traditional Chinese, which translates to, "All I want in life is for you to blossom into prosperity." These are example, can go to the next slide. We have examples of color palettes from previous works of mine as, as lead artists. The next slide. As well as our installation plan. So this will be installed in a steel reinforced concrete pad with vertical supports.
Thank you. Any comments, commission members?
And Grace is online now as well. She was having trouble getting in. I was trying to troubleshoot right now, but she's in if she had any comments. You're muted, Grace.
Oh, got it.
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Thank you for including me. I'm sorry for the troubles I've had, but very happy to participate as a project partner on Jordan Wong's exhibition.
Thank you. Any comments, guys?
It's great. Fantastic.
Okay, I do have an observation and a comment. What's up with, with, with square dancing? And I just started remembering square dancing when I was in grade school a hundred years ago. They taught us how to square dance. So that reference has been made a couple of times here today, so.
Yeah, so I can, I can clarify that. So there's, there's a, a group of, of women that do Chinese style square dancing. And the name of that lot was named after them because that is where they go to practice. And that's why we're so dedicated to elevating this lot. And they were actually the core inspiration to our original proposal for Transformer Arts Fund. Cause that, it's a parking lot. There's no shade. There's, it's not, you know, it gets hot. And we feel that the residents and, and even those visiting Asia Town, you know, deserve better and what really wants to add to this neighborhood. So that's where square dancing lot comes from, is that particular group, actually.
Okay. Thanks.
Learned it my outstanding.
They'll be performing actually at the Asian Festival.
Really?
This, this, this weekend. Yes.
Awesome. To the chair, I move approval.
My second.
Roll call, please.
Anthony.
Yes.
Luca.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Slight.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Good luck, man.
Much.
All right, we have item number four under special presentations and take it away.
The more alike than different mural expansion. Hi, Melissa. This particular mural is not in a Design Review District. The initial installation of the mural on this retaining wall, this control by the city, Councilman Casey was very supportive. I haven't heard back from him on the installation, but I'm sure that he's just as supportive to expand the mural as he was. Oh, we've got a letter now here from him. Thank you. There's not a lot of art in this neighborhood, other than the few that are in the immediate proximity, but this existing mural as it is, is the most prominent in the whole neighborhood. I'm definitely supportive of the expansion that's being proposed by West Park. And I am going to, I'm sorry, Jefferson Puritus West Park CDC, going to turn it over to Melissa.
Thank you very much. So back in 2021, we completed the first portion of this mural. It was done by Garrett Weider and it's a 3,000 square foot mural that honors people with developmental disabilities. It's the largest piece of public art honoring people with developmental disabilities in the country or in the state. And it was done in conjunction with funding from the Cleveland Browns. And you can see throughout the mural, there are logos of different agencies that support people with developmental disabilities in different, many different ways. And they all contributed to the project, as well as their clients came out and helped paint the mural during the process. We are looking to expand it. This is a picture of what that wall looked like before and what it looks like now. And we are looking to expand underneath the Norfolk Southern Bridge. On that bridge, both, there's both Norfolk Southern lines as well as RTA lines. I have been. I have been in contact with both Jason Wazle at Norfolk Southern and Mary Beth Feek at RTA, and they are both very supportive of the project. This is where the project, the extension would go. You can see that there's been a considerable amount of graffiti over the past few years, including some very racially charged graffiti that we've had to paint over on numerous occasions. We've had zero graffiti problems with the original mural since we installed it in 2021, and we are hoping that we continue. The one thing that we are going to do as we expand the mural is throughout the entire mural, we are going to add pictures of some renderings of people with developmental disabilities who have helped with the project. So they will be actual clients that have had an opportunity to work on the mural with the artist. This is just an example from the opposite corner of another piece of public art that was done. Just to give you some reference of the entire intersection, that was done through the mural My Neighborhood Program with the city, probably 12 to 15 years ago now. And it's like that piece of art has also stood there without any graffiti for all of those years. And that's it.
Commission members?
I'm a for approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Anthony.
Yes.
Luker.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Slight.
Yes, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
All right. Tara, this is it.
Last, but definitely not least, this is a sponsored basketball court with the Cavs who are represented here. It is at Trent Park on Newark Avenue and Ward 14. They have worked very closely with Councilwoman Santana, who's very supportive of the project. And I just wanted to read a quick blurb that she sent me in her, in her email. She said, I want to reiterate my full support for the basketball court restoration and accompanying art. As we discussed, this had been a long-term effort with significant community engagement throughout the process. The one thing that comes into question is how to treat it for the purpose of this body, because it does have some subtle incorporation of the Cavs logo, and it also has Ohio Cat logo, but it's a ground treatment with art. So I believe Shannon is on the line to see if they need a variance. They may not, but I know that you all have the ability to grant a variance if it's treated as signage. It's, it's, it's because, yeah, it's, yeah, it's because of the logos.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
But I'm going to let them present. I think it's a great project. I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on what was being integrated. So I'm going to turn it over to Pam and Kevin for the presentation. Thank you.
Yep. Good morning to the chair, to the committee. I'm Kevin Clayton, and with my partner here at Penfresco, we lead the social impacting equity team with the Cavs and Rocket Entertainment. We were really excited about this project for a couple of reasons. Five or six years ago, we met with the members of the Latin community, the Rican community, and we asked, what kind of things can we be doing to help? We had all sorts of things that you're all familiar with, like theme nights and things around what we do in Rocket Arena. More so, they were like, we need to help the community. So there were two major projects this year that we were working on, which is we are partnering with Central Vega and, you know, looking forward to that grand opening. With this particular project, which is taking a basketball court that has been running for years, but so it cools down because of crime, because of just loitering, bringing life into that community. We typically have done works over the past seven years. We've done 17 actual, we've done, we've done 17 indoor courts in community centers around Cleveland. We have a building going on right now that we're going to be unveiling at Glenville. This is our first outdoor. And it's not just going in to fill out, fill in the cracks. As you can see on that particular picture, the court has grass growing in. This is resurfacing the entire court so that we can make sure that from a maintenance standpoint, it's not coming back every year just to fill in cracks. So I'll pass it to Pam so she can talk about the artwork, which we're really excited about.
Thank you. Good morning. We have partnered with a company called Aleva to support us. Sorry. Good morning. We have partnered with a company called Aleva to support us in this work. They're out of Mexico City, and they support NBA teams all over the country, revitalizing courts. They do a lot of surveying. So they came in actually three times to survey the community, talk with Councilwoman Santana about what the community wants to see. As you can see, they've designed a beautiful, a beautiful mural that translates to we are art. And the idea here is to get the community involved in the actual painting of the art. So once the court is actually serviced and prepared, we'll have some outlines and stenciling, and then we're going to encourage kids from Lincoln West, some other local, local neighbors to come in and help us paint, which will be very exciting. And we've done several courts in the country of Brazil outside, and we've done one in Pittsburgh, but as Kevin really, you know, has just mentioned, this is our first one in the city, outdoor, and we feel like it's going to be a really big deal. So we're very excited about it.
And they are working with the city also on a license agreement based on an approval today.
The members in.
If, if I could.
Staff, I'm sorry, yes.
Sure, if I could add to what Tara mentioned about, there are some incorporations of the Cavs C in the court design, as well as the Cavaliers logo and Caterpillar logo as part of the overall mural. And so should the commission wish to move for approval, we would also request that your motion include approval for a variance for off-premise signage, given their role as community partners and sponsors.
Sorry, I didn't catch that last part, director, off?
Off-premise signage, so.
Off-premise signage. What does that mean?
Shannon is online to field any additional detailed zoning questions. But basically, what it means in essence is this is a park. This isn't on the business premise of either of those logos. And so under our zoning code, it requires a variance to have those logos off-premise as part of the mural.
Okay, well, Shannon, she's smarter than I am. Can you enlighten us a bit?
Yes, good morning again, Shannon Leonard. Excuse me. So essentially, what you have here is a partnership, a for-profit partnership sponsor being the Cavaliers. The Cleveland Cavaliers is the part of the National Business Association, Cleveland Cavaliers basketball team. And because this isn't on, at the arena, Rocket Arena, the home of the Cavs or at their headquarters, this is a park and it's providing sponsorship. And because they are for profit, even though they're partnering with, you know, the park or the nonprofit, it is still considered off-premise signage. And so while it is public art, it is also advertising for the Cavaliers for better or for worse. And so what we're requesting is that to, to be in alignment with everything else that we do, that you would, if you, if you approve this, to include the fact that it is off-premise or noted billboard signage is not really the proper term, but it's the same thing. And that the purpose for doing so is because of, it meets the design compatibility and its minimal variation being that it's a partnership with the Cavs. It's a community partnership. Thanks.
Thank you, Shannon. So I will move approval, the court mural, and with also stating the commission's support for a variance to be granted for MS's signage.
My second.
Roll call, please.
Anthony.
Yes.
Luker.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Slight.
Yes.
Thank you and good luck.
We thank you.
Yep.
Thank you all.
All righty.
I know, I keep falling down on that one. Boy, Rick, um. You're here for ordinance numbers 636. Determining the method of making the public improvement. What's that?
569.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I turned the page because, you know, I'm trying to get it done. Okay, so, so we'll go through, just let me, cue me when you get to six, I know. So we're here for this number 569. Authorizing the Director of Capital Projects to issue permit to Cleveland Public Library.
Thank you. This is a put up, a monument, a monument ball at the MLK Library, Cleveland Public Library. As you can see on the next slide, there it is. It's 10 feet tall, four sided, and eight sides, one foot. The other one, Martin Luther King Jr. Campus, the other one in the Public Library with Smogo. We see a picture next to it where it sits about four feet off the base of the building itself. Then if you go to the following slide, it's more of a general location from a plan view where it will be sitting. And finally, it's the last slide, to the very, very left of the slide, you can see where the sign will be located. So with that, if there are any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Staff, any comments?
No comments from us.
Commission members?
I'd like to make motion, Mr. Chair, for approval of mandatory referral 569-2025.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Anthony.
Yes.
Luker.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
And slight.
Are you here for the next one too, Rick?
No, it's number six on your agenda.
Oh, number six, I'm sorry. It has no ordinance number, but it's authorizing the Director of Capital Projects to issue a permit to the Cleveland Clinic Foundation to encroach into and over the public right of way along East 96th.
Thank you. What this encroachment is for is a Cleveland clinic. It wants to put in a canopy, a rather large one. It's about 100 feet by 30 feet wide, if we can go to the next slide, please.
I'm sorry. Okay.
We can go to the next one. And let's go to the next one.
It's 96, that building, oh.
As I said, it's a very large canopy, about 100 feet by 30 feet wide. It's at, this is the Q Building, as it's known with the clinic, the Glickman Building. This is where the Urological and Kidney Institute is at. It's, I think, if when I read, it's the busiest surgical building with the, with the Cleveland Clinic. It's on East, the street itself is East 96 Streets between Carnegie and Dupont. It's not yet constructed. They're trying desperately to move forward with it, and we're trying to get this encroachment as fast as we could.
Okay.
If you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Hmm, stat, no, we'll just, I assume you don't. I'm just going to keep moving, okay? Commission members?
Chair, I recommend that we approve ordinance, unnumbered, 2025. Or does yours reflect an number?
No.
Okay.
No, sorry, no.
Authorizing the Director of Capital Projects to issue a permit to the Cleveland Clinic Foundation to encroach into the, excuse me, encroach and over the public right of way of East 96th.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Anthony.
Yes.
Luker.
Yes.
Gray Scott.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Slight.
Yes.
Hey.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care, Rick.
Thank you.
The next on the agenda under mandatory referral is item number 636, determining the method of making the public improvement of constructing recreational improvements to Rockefeller Park under the, I'll just stop there, I'm getting blurry. Okay. I have my reading glasses on.
All right, Mr. Chairman, thank you for entertaining us. The Mayor's Office of Capital Projects is in the process of renovating and completely replacing the Rockefeller Tennis Courts. This is at East 105th and Martin Luther King Jr. Drive. This is going to be a complete tear out and replacement with new paving, fencing, backboard wall for practice, drinking fountain, paving the parking lot. So complete renovation and actually restoring the lights too. We're putting in new LED lights for evening play. So these are our premier tennis courts in the city, and there's a big three-city tennis tournament that's coming up Labor Day weekend. So we're trying to get this done for that.
Well, last time I drove by there, it looks like it's already started.
It's been a little demolition, Doc. So we're here, man, for mandatory referrals.
Commission members?
I'd like to make a motion to approve mandatory referral number 166-2025.
My second. Roll call, please.
Anthony.
Yes.
Luker.
Yes.
Gray Scott.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Slight.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right.
Good luck, man.
Thanks.
There's no ordinance number for item three, but it's authorizing the resolution of necessity and establishment of the Gordon Park, Gordon Square Arts District.
Everybody, Ethan Wiggins, Northwest Neighborhood CDC. I'm here to present the special improvement district for Gordon Square between the years of 2026 and 2030. Just to give like a quick little brief overview, it was originally formed in 2010. It's since been renewed in 2016 and 2021, both for five-year periods. It uses 100% linear front footage for the assessment methodology, meaning it doesn't use any property value to assess these parcels. This CID renewal period, we will be using a $38.38 assessment with a 2.5% increase year over year. This will give us about $158,000 in the beginning of year one, 2026, ending with $174,000 in year five in 2020 or 2030. The total district front footage is 4,000 feet, or just a little bit over 4,000 feet with 55 parcels in the district. It includes some exempt parcels, including Our Lady of Mount Carmel Church, as well as some city improvement parking lots. Uh, next slide. Over here is the boundary map of the district. You'll see that it pretty much runs along Detroit Avenue between 58th Street and 73rd almost entirely. If you look at the yellow lines, those are the actual frontages being assessed. You'll notice there's a little bit of deviation from that Detroit Avenue frontage along the northwest portions of 67th and 65th. That is to keep concise with the activated storefronts of Near West Theater, as well as the Capitol Theater. In red, you'll see Mount Carmel on the west end. And then on the east end of the district, you'll see the red assessed line for Lot 61, which the city recently acquired in a land swap with Cleveland Public Theater. Uh, next slide. Uh, just like a breakdown of the services, we prioritize four kinds of buckets, maintenance, security and hospitality, marketing and events and administrative. This is split 45% for maintenance, 25% for security, and then 15% for the others. Next slide. Driving into what these kind of entail, the maintenance services includes our landscaping, planter boxes, irrigation systems, tree pruning, snow removal contracts for the sidewalks, city-owned lots and bus shelters, amenity installation and repairs, so bike racks, holiday light signage, as well as district power washing. Uh, next slide. Hospitality and security includes business and security check-ins, security cameras for the district, hospitality interactions such as escorting the public to the parking lots, giving directions, and as well as graffiti removal. Next slide. Uh, and then lastly, for marketing services, we do a lot with event support, including financially supporting historic haunts or Dia de Muertos. It also includes our promo materials, you know, advertisements for the district, such as videos, flyers, and other marketing material, allows us to keep a nice social media presence and website, as well as a continuing monthly newsletter. Uh, next slide. And then just to kind of wrap up, I think it's kind of important to end on some quantitative key metrics. Since 2020, which was the last renewal period, you know, these are some key numbers that have been pulled that these, this assessment kind of has gone towards. Some like high-level highlights, 373 graffiti spots removed, hospitality assistance with businesses, 1,337, 117 hours of power washing, and then kind of my favorite, that last one, the trash removal, 208, 208,000 pounds of trash removed, which I don't know. uh, two hundred and eight, two hundred and eight thousand, uh, pounds of trash removed, which, I don't know, that's huge. Uh, so that's my presentation, uh, happy to take any questions.
Commission members? This is my neighborhood, I see them all the time, it makes a big difference. Um, I'll, I'll move, uh, approval of unnumbered ordinance for the establishment of the, uh, Gordon Square Arts District, said, second. Roll call, please.
Anthony.
Yes.
Luker.
Yes.
Gray Scott.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
For item unnumbered ordinance, authorize, authorizing a resolution of necessity and establishment of a downtown special improvement district.
Hello, good morning. My name is Audrey Gerlock, I'm Chief Operating Officer of Downtown Cleveland Inc., and I'm joined by my colleague Mark Pugatz, who's Senior Manager of the Special Improvement District. So, uh, the Downtown Cleveland Improvement District was initially formed in two thousand and five to provide clean and safe services throughout downtown. It has been renewed five, or, uh, every five years since then, and this will be the fourth renewal. Typically, our terms have been every five years, this time we're going for a seven-year renewal. Uh, next slide, please. To give you a little high-level information on the background of the Downtown Cleveland Improvement District, we expect to, uh, bring in five-point-eight million dollars in assessment revenue in our first year of the upcoming term, beginning in twenty twenty-six. From there, we will have a two-point-three-five percent annual increase year-over-year throughout the remainder of the term, and we expect to bring in forty-three-point-five million dollars of assessment revenue throughout the total term. A little bit about the district, it covers one hundred and thirty-four thousand, uh, feet, a bit larger, uh, than the Gordon Square Arts District. Um, it encompasses over thirteen hundred parcels as well. And for our assessment formula, how we calculate assessments for each property, it is a combination of linear front footage serviced and assessed value. Uh, Mark, if you want to briefly speak on that formula?
Yeah, the assessment methodology uses a hybrid formula, which is basically an aggregate for the geography you'll see in a accompanying slide. One quarter of the assessment is based on the linear front footage, and approximately three-quarters comes from, the balance comes from valuation.
Thank you, uh, and next slide, please, thank you.
If my math is correct, that's about five miles? Twenty-five miles? Yes, that's a lot, okay.
It is, uh, so this is just an example of a budget, obviously, we have not set the budget yet for the twenty twenty-six, uh, year, but this is generally how we allocate the Special Improvement District revenue. Obviously, the vast majority, usually between seventy-five and eighty percent, goes towards our Clean and Safe Program, with the balance being spread through economic development and marketing, management fee, reserves, and parks and public space maintenance. Next slide, please. And here's that geography to give you an idea of, uh, the map of the district and where our services.
I was trying to like do it in my head, like this is not working.
Thank you, and as for the services, um, we're similar to the last presentation, Clean and Safe is really our bread and butter, uh, litter disposal, graffiti removal, uh, we provide safety escorts, business check-ins and hospitality services. Um, we also will assist motor vehicle, uh, folks that are, are experiencing issues, uh, often removing biohazards from the sidewalk and right-of-way, and facilitating outreach to our unsheltered neighbors. Our ambassadors are active seven AM to midnight every day, they deploy year-round, we usually have between forty and fifty ambassadors out in the field, depending on the season. Um, we also maintain planters along Euclid Avenue, we do power washing in front of sidewalks, assist with snow removal at RTA, uh, stations and in, um, in front of so, some of the city's property. Um, then also through the Special Improvement District, we facilitate public space maintenance and operations, some of our programming you're probably familiar with, uh, the annual Winterland holiday tree lighting, um, food trucks which are going on now, a live music series, Fourth of July fireworks, Light Up the Lake, all of that. And then, um, additionally, some economic development and marketing in support of the businesses within the district. Okay, next slide, please. And just a note on our impact, I wanted to provide a few key metrics from the year twenty twenty-four. Uh, we removed seven hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two pounds of trash, uh, in twenty twenty-four alone, removed over twenty-two hundred graffiti tags from properties, uh, provided twenty-seven thousand hospitality assists, and hosted over a hundred and fifty, uh, publics free programming events in the public, uh, realm in downtown. Uh, any questions?
I don't, commission members?
I move approval of, uh, this unnumbered ordinance, uh, for the, uh, continuation of the downtown, uh, CID.
Second.
Thank you.
Roll call, please, thank you.
Anthony.
Yes.
Luker.
Yes.
Gray Scott.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Have a good one.
Thank you. All right, um, item number seven, unnumbered ordinance to supplement the codified ordinance, ordinances of
Oh, wait, no, we
Oh. Ordinance of Cleveland, Ohio.
Number seven, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is that it? No one here?
Yes.
All right, we're gonna get skipped. We're rolling.
I saw, look, there were two more before me. We, um, did a
Yeah.
Three organizations. Um, back.
Been freestyle.
Oh, it's the, the airport? Big news about the airport.
Thank you.
Right.
All right, um, I'm Maddie Newingham with the Planning Commission. Um, we're going to talk about underspeed vehicles and just, you know, for a point of reference, we're really talking about golf carts here. Um, so, to give you a bit of an overview, um, we're proposing, or we'd like to propose legislation that, um, allows for golf, golf cart-related business opportunities. Um, we want to, you know, do like tours, um, transportation like to and from sports and entertainment events, things like that, um, short-term travel distance. Um, and really, we have, um, the current infrastructure, um, to work within our Public Safety and Division of Assessment and Licenses to pretty easily work out a permitting process. Um, we already have a process for motor vehicles and sightseeing businesses, so we're feeling pretty good about it not being a huge lift. Um, and then just kind of, uh, getting into, you know, really what we're doing here. Um, we had two, uh, business applicants, um, apply for, you know, to use golf carts on our roads. Um, this is Bob Polk, he's, um, one of them, so it would be a touring business. Um, and really the idea, you know, we want to promote accessibility, but, um, also allow for like leisurely activity and seeing, um, you know, seeing what there is in Ohio City, Trima, downtown. Um, so yeah, really just adding another, another level, something to do. Um, and we actually, um, have some inspiration for the legislation, so we are not starting from nothing. Um, Columbus has an equivalent legislation, they use a little bit of different terminology, but, um, that would be, you know, the inspiration for art ordinance. Um, okay, if we could go to the next slide, um, so I just want to talk a little bit about the legislation components. Um, I won't tick through each one, but these are essentially sections that, um, could be in the legislation and similar to what, um, Columbus has. Um, but we don't have to do it, you know, everything in here, like Columbus allows for advertising on the golf carts, you know, it's, it's really whatever we want it to be. Um, we can be, you know, as regulatory as, as needed. Um, but I want to call out in particular, um, licensing requirements and then, um, inspections. So first with the licensing requirements, um, this would go, uh, with the, uh, Division of Assessment and Licenses, and they would generally handle, um, you know, the, the ideas they'd handle the inspection process, um, and there would just be, you know, with my pieces of legislation, open share requirements about issuing the license, reworking the license, uh, you know, insurance requirements, things like that. Um, and then with regard to the inspections, um, safety of course is a top priority, so it does through the Sheriff's Office, um, but, um, I since learned through our legislation that it would actually be Cleveland Police. Um, so most likely what we think would happen is that Cleve- Cleveland Police would be, um, tasked to do these inspections and work with the Division of Assessments and Licenses. Um, and then, um, really what we're proposing fits within the state code. There, you know, there are just some specificities about like the, the speed limit and, you know, types of roads that golf carts would go on, so, you know, something to remember here is we don't have to, you know, let this be a free-for-all, we can really control, um, this being a business-oriented endeavor, so, you know, people aren't dr- necessarily driving golf carts, uh, you know, to and from whatever businesses, like, and there'd also be, you know, possibility to limit the number of licenses and things like that, so, um, you know, we're able to control this as much as we'd like. Um, so I wanted to talk a little bit about the, um, business applications, yeah, um, and I have Bob here. Um, Bob, you can speak to your business better than I can, so do you want to give a little bit of an overview?
Uh, yeah, thank you, everybody, my name's, uh, Bob Polk, uh, I'm currently owner-operator of, uh, Bob's Bike Tours, which I've been doing throughout the city since two thousand and eleven. Uh, this would just kind of be an expansion of what I do already. Um, as people get older, some of them don't want to ride bikes anymore, you know, in a, a great way, I thought the seat of city is for, uh, golf carts, these are not, these golf carts are, they only hold eight people, and they're all, um, they're all street legal, you know, seat belts, everything, everything is, that's needed is, uh, taken care of. Uh, but, think of, um, when I thought of this, I thought of, uh, Lally the Trolley, that used to be here, but of course, on a much scaled down level. Um, I just want to give people like a personal tour of the city that's, uh, you know, much more personal and small and stuff, so, um, that's, that's my intent, that's what I'd like to do, so. If there's any, if you have any questions for me, uh, I'll answer them for you if you can.
Okay, great, um, so the, the other business opportunity is with Chris Taylor, and, um, his business is a bit more focused on, you know, like transportation from, to and from sporting events, and just things like that, that really, you know, help people travel longer distances and, you know, help folks with accessibility needs. Um, so, with that said, um, I just wanted to flash, um, the Columbus equivalency here. Um, they have a couple different pieces of legislation, but it's, we would create one piece of legislation, really, um, what it would do is, um, under whatever regulations we come up with, it would permit, um, golf carts and, and bike lanes on certain roads under thirty-five miles per hour, um, and then we'd set out requirements for the owner and for the driver. Um, and, uh, let's see, if there's anything else. Yeah, so I, I think that's about it, um, do you have anything to add, Callie?
Just to summarize very quickly, um, we embarked on this path because of constituents coming to us interested in these business opportunities. The Ohio Revised Code requires local municipalities to adopt our specific local regulations around the use of underspeed vehicles like golf carts, and so that's the process that we have embarked on, that's culminating in this legislation. Ohio Revised Code does outline a couple of requirements, including that vehicle inspection limits to streets thirty-five miles per hour or under, and state titling and licensing, all of which will be incorporated in, and so that, that's really how this came about, and the, um, components that you see integrated into the legislation today.
Um, before I ask Commissioner, I do have a question, and it's around inspections by the Cleveland Police. Do we have institutional knowledge, I mean, is it, I mean, it seems somewhat benign, but it's important, so I was just curious where we stand there.
Yeah, so we already require inspections for, um, certain kinds of vehicles, like, um, with bicycles, you know, like the scooters, motorized vehicles. So there's already a knowledge of, um, you know, doing inspections, obviously with these vehicles, it requires, uh, like a deeper, a deeper inspection to make sure really the vehicles are as safe as a car, or as, you know, as safe as they can be. Um, so we have, um, I put together kind of a, a long list that I pulled from the state, uh, state legislation and from our code, just to see if the things that we would inspect match, um, so we, we do, we meet the state requirements and more, um, so there's
There's framework in place to guide the process. Okay, that's really what I was
Thankfully. It's very convenient, actually.
Thank you. Commission members?
I'm, I'm approaching forty, and I've been joking with my wife that instead of getting an electric car, I should just get a golf cart, so this is actually very important for me. Um, so it's, add to the director, as it currently stands, street, the golf carts are not legal in the city of Cleveland, because we haven't, this is not purely about licensing businesses, this is about making golf carts, street legal golf carts, legal in Cleveland, and licensing businesses, it's a twofer.
Yes, the guidance that we received from our legal team is that that section of the Ohio Revised Code requires a local ordinance in order to make golf cart street legal.
Gotcha.
Gotcha. And that can be running around here with like, uh, turbo golf carts or anything.
No, okay, that's me.
I purchased a, a new golf cart, they're, they're limited to twenty-five miles.
I'm being facetious, but yeah.
I know. Yeah, but no.
Actually, a pretty cool golf cart, I got to take a look at it.
I will move approval of this unnumbered ordinance.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Anthony.
Yes.
Luker.
Yes.
Uh, McCray Scott.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
And slide.
Yes. Okay, thank you, um, next, unnumbered ordinance on the, under item eight, authorizing Director of Community Development to enter into a contract to provide a, a loan to Warner and Swayze LLC. Now I figured out why Ashley's been sitting here, I thought she enjoyed hanging out, uh, did I get, I'm looking at her like, why are you here?
There were a few of them that were relevant.
I got to stay here all day. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone, um, my name is Tony Bango, I am the Bureau Chief of Housing Development in the Department of Community Development. Um, I'm gonna try and keep this short, so that, so that we're being respectful of your agenda, but I'm, I'm joined here also, not just with Ashley, but also Jeff Mills with Penrose Development. Um, we're here to talk about the Warner and Swayze Building, located at five, seven, oh, one Carnegie Avenue, I think everyone in the room is familiar with it. Uh, this building has been vacant, I believe, since the eighties, there's been multiple attempts to develop it. Penrose started working with this project in twenty eighteen, and I think that we are looking at a potential financial closing for this deal in November of this year, which means construction will be starting on the building by the end of the year. Uh, really great news for the project, the neighborhood, and the city of Cleveland. Uh, the ordinance that we're here for today is really the first step of that process, and what we're asking for is your approval, um, not just for the three-million-dollar loan, uh, from my department, but we're also asking for your approval to sell the building to Penrose Development for roughly two million dollars, and then reinvest those funds back into the project to help assist with construction. I'll go ahead and transition to Jeff now, and he can talk a little bit about the details of the project.
Sure, thanks, Tony, and hello, Ashley, and, and, uh, Commission. Um, we are so very excited to be at this point in what has been, uh, a very long process, not just for us, uh, but for Midtown, our, our development partners on this deal. This, um, piece of legislation that Tony has just introduced is a really important step that allows us to preserve uh, an important piece of the funding stack that has already been committed, but without action will be, um, will be going away. This effort also, at the same time, allows us to continue to pursue the final three critical funding sources uh, in this deal that'll allow us to get to the closing that, um, that Tony mentioned. But we, we appreciate, uh, every, the, the, the amount of support that we have received from the city, the state, the federal government, um, uh, foundation fo- folks, every, across the, the, um, universe of individuals who, who could support this have, and we are, um, joyful that we're here, and, uh, and, and continuing to work towards transforming this really important asset into affordable housing for families and seniors.
Thank you. Commission members? Commission members?
I will, I'm moving for approval. I approve on the unnumbered ordinance.
And I will second. Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Lucker?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Light.
Yes.
Okay, um, ordinance number six oh four, um, determining the method of making the public improvement in designing and constructing a surface parking facility at Cleveland Hopkins Airport.
This is also in presentation with six twenty-one, which is also referring to the parking garage structures on the airport.
Oh, four four one zero three.
Um.
Yes. Um, my name is, uh, Brad Becker. I'm the Assistant Commissioner of Development at the airport. Um, I'm also joined here with our consultants from Pasley to talk about these two projects. Um, as you're aware, about a week ago, the mayor came out to the airport and did a presentation press release for the, uh, new terminal development plan, um, which is a one-point-three-billion-dollar plan over about the next seven or eight years. And the first two projects that we're introducing today and these two pieces of legislation are parking facilities, which the, uh, airport needs, obviously, right now, and as well as to complete this plan in the future. So the first one is the, uh, the parking lot. It's the Gold Lot, and I'm going to have, uh, Mike describe that. As you see, there's a timeline here for these, uh, two projects, which, uh, the Gold Lot will start this year, and the, uh, parking deck will probably start at the end of twenty-six. So I'm going to turn this over to Mike to give a brief description of the, uh, parking lot. Think you're on mute. I don't think it's working, Mike. Anyway, I can, I can start with the description. Um, anyway, this, uh, this proposed parking lot, um, it's going to be on the, uh,
Brad? Brad, sorry, your volume just went down a little bit.
Okay. How about now? Can you hear me?
Better.
Thank you.
Better? All right. I'll get a little closer to the mic. Um, I got Mike here, so I'll have him do the description.
Good morning. Sorry about that. It showed unmuted at my end. Um, this project, the, uh, surface parking lot, is part of a larger modernization program. The intent is to repurpose the existing airfield ramp area for surface parking for approximately fifteen hundred vehicles east of Concourse D, which is decom- was decommissioned, as you all know, in June of twenty fourteen. Plan north is to your right. The intent is to construct a new wildlife fence along the west border, separating the parking lot from the airfield and Concourse D. The existing wildlife fence will border the lot on the north, south, and east sides. Vehicle access will be inbound from the south and exit to the north. This will be a revenue-based lot operated by the Department of Port Control. A new covered walkway will be constructed to provide pedestrian access from the north side of the lot to the terminal. Additionally, a shuttle bus service will also be available with shelters located within the parking lot. Any questions?
Commission members? Do you guys, I'm, I'm very familiar with all this, so I don't want to jump the gun. Okay.
Okay, yeah, okay.
I'll move approval of ordinance, um, six oh four, twenty twenty-five, um, related to the construction of the Gold Lot.
I second.
Anthony?
Yes.
Lucker?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Light.
Yes. So we have one more ordinance. I guess it's related to
Yes, they were in the same presentation, so we can just motion for
Still, we need a motion for six twenty-one.
I will also make a motion to approve ordinance six twenty-one determining the method of making the public improvement.
Thank you.
Second.
Anthony?
Yes.
Lucker?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
And light.
Yes. All right, thank you.
All right, if you guys could take a, a moment to look at administrative approvals, and when you're ready.
Uh, for the chair, I, uh, make a motion for us to approve the administrative approvals, uh, starting with ordinance number six zero three dash twenty-five through unnumbered ordinance, uh, five total. Five total in this slate.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Lucker?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Light.
Yes. All right, we're going to make it before twelve, so Director, I put some pressure on you.
Yes, I will make it within four minutes. So I first want to extend appreciation to all the commission members for working with us to get the legislation moving so that we're providing good service to folks before the, um, council recess, and also to our staff who really flexed a lot this week to fold things in and take in a bunch of requests as, um, everyone was adjusting their approach to the upcoming deadlines. Um, in keeping with our theme around a day of public art presentations, I have a couple of art updates to share. Um, the slides that Evelyn is going to flip through show the final designs that were administratively approved based on the commission's guidance, um, at the last Planning Commission meeting around confirmed sites. So I just wanted to, um, again, for appreciation and recognition to these artists and the designs that will be rolling out as part of the Impart two and six murals, um, over the coming months. In addition, we are thrilled to share that, um, the East One Fortieth Street mural titled Collinwood by artist Nate Frizzell was awarded last week the National Gold Award at the National Mural Awards Ceremony. This is a national recognition, um, that we brought home to Cleveland, which is amazing, beating out over three hundred entries nationally across six regions. This mural is on a retaining wall at East One Fortieth Street and Dease Avenue, um, adjacent to a railroad underpass, and really incorporates a lot of symbology, community, um, input, and a really collaborative process between the artist and the community. We don't have an image of it in the slides, unfortunately, but it is in place today. We encourage all of you, um, to go and visit and see that there. We're really proud to be a gold medal recipient here in Cleveland of our art. And additionally, in that, in that ceremony, um, Land Studio here in Cleveland was one of three organizations rec- recognized with a community award for their work on the RTA Woodhill Central Bus Garage mural. So great week for Cleveland art and artists and recognition. In addition to those things, to sort of close the, the cap on the art announcements, in partnership with the mayor's office and senior strategist Rhonda Brown, and with the generosity of the Keithley family, City Planning and the mayor's office will be hosting a public art intern this summer to really go through our policies and procedures around public art, look at our ordinances and recommend institutional changes and alignment to, um, to, to Yes, we're, we're thrilled to have them here to help us look at our systems and recommend changes for us to implement. Um, finally, two other quick updates. We are continuing the process of permitting reform within ASARA with our partners in the Building and Housing Department and other agencies across the city. We expect that there will be an opportunity to beta test for architects and developers, um, in the coming summer. So if that is something that anyone listening is interested in, please reach out, and we will help integrate you into focus groups or beta testing for that system. We're very excited about what that will mean in terms of efficiency and transparency in the permitting process. And my last announcement is that, um, given the Juneteenth holiday on June nineteenth, our CPC meeting originally scheduled for June twentieth will be pushed back a week to Friday, June twenty-seventh, and we'll be communicating that through all the proper channels.
I, I have to say, uh, Director and Tara, um, the, the quality and vibrancy of, of the murals that have come the last few months, or even the last year, have really been great. Um, you know, I, you know, I think when we first started, we were just trying to figure out our sea lakes, but I think we got the right artists doing it, and it's just that, that they're really awesome. It's really awesome work, in my opinion. And having said that, move is officially adjourned.